All right. No, I'm going back in. Actually, I can do that after this. All right, so today's Tuesday, March 25th. It's the council's work session. I'm calling this meeting to order and giving notice that at this meeting, the council may vote to go into executive session, which will not be open to the public, for discuss discussion and consultation with the city's attorneys on any item that is on tonight's agenda. Can we have a roll call?
Mayor Daggett here. Vice Mayor Sweet.
Here.
Councilmember Aslan.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Present.
Councilmember House. Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember Spence.
Here.
Councilmember Aslan, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Always my honor and privilege. Please stand if you're able. Excellent. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. It is an honor to read the mission statement. The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
And Vice Mayor.
Thank you. The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands still inhabited by native descendants, border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations who will forever know this place as home.
Thank you. All right, next up is open call to the public. This is where the public can address council on any item that is not on today's agenda. There are comment cards in the back if you would like to speak. And because whatever you're going to tell us is not on our agenda, we can't ask you questions, answer questions. We can't have any back and forth. So, we have Rose Cope.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers. My name is Eager Beaver, and I am the league manager on the Board of Directors and a skating member of high-altitude roller derby, a local roller derby league that has proudly been a part of this community since 2012. When I mention roller derby, images of wild-haired women in tights knocking each other over on the rails of a bank track may come to mind. But modern roller derby is a regulated sport that requires athleticism and endurance and is open to all. In a world where many sports have historically been male-dominated, roller derby is an exception. Our sport is one of few with inclusive regulations, offering involvement to people of all backgrounds, shapes, and sizes. We embrace everyone for who they are, and that's what makes our community so powerful. I can't tell you how many times I've heard the words, "roller derby changed my life." I am living proof of the fact that roller derby is more than just a sport. It is a welcoming, inclusive place where people come together from all corners of life, less to compete but more to find belonging, strength, and connection. Our skaters are doctors, therapists, scientists, real estate agents, wildland firefighters, middle school teachers, parents, and more during the day. But when they put away their lab coats and clipboards and fire boots, they become fierce athletes who support one another on and off the track. I can't quite describe for you the power and strength that I have found in my teammates and through them in myself. However, right now, our ability to continue growing and thriving as a league is at risk. We recently lost one of our practice spaces at Flagstaff Junior Academy, and now we share space at Mount Eldon Middle School with many other Flagstaff sport groups. FUSD is dealing with the pressure of catering to thousands of community members every single month. Our practice time and space are at risk. This impacts our league at every level, from our brand-new Fresh Meat, who are just starting to discover the magic of this sport, to our A-level travel team, who are competing in tournaments in Canada, working to maintain and improve our international competitive ranking. Flagstaff needs a multipurpose indoor sports complex, a place that can house roller derby flat track along with other activities like pickleball, volleyball, and indoor soccer. In a city where inclement weather can limit outdoor activities, an indoor facility would allow our community's multiple sports groups to be active year-round. Flagstaff has not created any new parks, I believe, in 15 years. Many, many other small towns have had projects like this in the works, and I would love to see something like that happen in Flagstaff. We're asking for your support, so please consider adding the development of such a complex to a future agenda. I know that we're not alone. Many other sports groups in Flagstaff would benefit from the idea and will stand with us in support of this. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Wilma Enenga.
Hello. I have submitted a questions, which I understand you can't answer today, but which I hope will be answered in writing. To me, I've left my name and address. I'm here today on several topics. The first is the 50, the proposed 53-127-158 sale of city and Arizona trust lands happens to be directly below my home. Those city-owned lands had previously been designated as open space. When was that designation changed to allow this sale? And shouldn't the residents who were directly impacted by that, homes right bordering that, have been consulted? Sinclair Wash is a designated floodplain. Is the restructuring of Butler going to change that by putting in pipes that will allow that to be elevated and removed from being a floodplain? If so, won't that land be more valuable? And doesn't it make more sense to delay having an auction? Otherwise, that 17 acres may go for $5 million. It could be worth a whole lot more when the rebuild, rebuild-out is completed. Is there a plan to remove the FUTS that is currently on the western edge of that area? And as part, it's shown in the application for the $19 million in funding as number two, FUTS. Is that going to be removed? And if so, is that for the one that's being built through the developed area, the area that will have homes on it? Because I'm probably not going to use it. And who's paying for that FUTS in the new housing subdivision? And I'm also asking about Prop 207 waiver. Would it be correct to assume that going forward, we need to fight any rezoning change that has the potential to allow commercial or residential properties to be built, sometimes with conditions set by the city council? Since those conditions are moot, should the developer request a Prop 207 waiver after the rezoning has been approved? I think that is a critical question for us citizens going forward because what I call the monstrosity on the hill, on the corner of Fourth and Butler, got a Prop 207 waiver. When that rezoning was approved, it was for three stories. Now it's up to five or six. And I think that's unconscionable. And last, this plant, the Re-Butler, Fourth Street redevelopment stops at the entrance to Sonagua Heights, where in fact, there's some real significant problems. I had to wait behind five cars that were waiting to get into school for school pickup to get into Sonagua Heights. Or I could have gone into the center lane and then cut in front of them to get into Sonagua Heights, which I think would probably be illegal and dangerous. And we can hardly cross that street on foot to get over to the other side of the road.
Thank you. And we'll make sure to get answers to your letter, to you. We have your email address on the letter.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have proclamations. We have a proclamation, "Week of the Young Child." So, anyone who is here for that, if you would join us at the edge of the dais. Welcome, Kathy. And then, after we take a photo of all of us, if you'd like to say a few words, you are invited to, but you don't have to. All of Arizona's children deserve access to quality early care and education, ECE, environments. Quality childcare programs build children's lifelong learning skills during the critical years from birth to age five. ECE teachers and childcare providers are the essential workforce that helps Arizona parents get to work or school. Funding quality childcare is a smart investment that improves family well-being, strengthens communities, and grows our state's prosperity. First things first, Arizona Association for the Education of Young Children, Southern Arizona Association for the Education of Young Children, and other community organizations, in conjunction with the National Association for the Education of Young Children, are celebrating the 54th anniversary of the Week of the Young Child. These organizations are working to improve equitable early childhood opportunities that provide a strong start for children in Flagstaff. Public policies that support ECE for Arizona's youngest learners help our families, communities, and the economy thrive. Now therefore, I, Mayor Becky Daggett, Mayor of the City of Flagstaff, Arizona, do hereby proclaim April 5th through the 11th, 2025, as the Week of the Young Child. Hi, everybody. And council, thank you so much for your support. Just want to remind you all, if you didn't already know, that 90% of the brain is developed by age five. This is why investing in those early years is so important. And it's not just important for the children, but it's also important for their families. Many people who drop out of college, three-quarters of them, cite access to childcare as one of the primary reasons that they're dropping out. Employers are having difficulty hiring people because their employees can't get access to high-quality early learning and development for their children. First things first is trying to help with that. We also have lots of resources for parents on our website. I'm happy to come talk to any group that you would like me to about this, whether it's your kayaking group, your DND group, your Rotary Club, whatever. I also want to let you know that we're going to kick off the Week of the Young Child with the Early Childhood Fair at Caleb Elementary School. It's from 9:30 to 12:30 in the morning. It's free and has lots of resources and activities for the kids. It's a STEAM fair, so I hope you'll join us. Thank you, and thank you, council. Next up, we have review of the draft agenda for the April 1st, 2025 City Council meeting. Council, do you have any questions or concerns about the agenda? Seeing none, we will move on to item number seven, March Work Aniversaries.
So, before we begin, I want to do a quick shout-out to Tiffany Snyder. She was the person behind this presentation. She started to help in that regard so that as we bring this presentation forward to council, we have all the pictures and information included. So, thanks to Tiffany. So, we have March milestones for you today. Again, we'll start with our first-year work anniversaries. We've got some folks celebrating in recreation as well as our police department. Public Works on this slide. And then additional, Prose Employees, Lifeguard is also in recreation. So, a lot of folks celebrating their first year with the city. When we move on to our fifth year, we have Jason, who's one of our police officers. He's been with us at our Flagstaff Police Department. We've got Tom Johnson, who's working in our Management Services Team as a senior accountant. We've got Missy, who is our Airport Administrative Specialist. We have Paul Santana, who is our Deputy Chief Information Officer, celebrating his 10th year with the city. As well as Adam Mealy, also working out at the airport as a program manager. So Keith, we were hoping we were going to get a picture of him, but the illness that's been passed around the city, he and his family have contracted it. So, we were unable to get an updated picture of him. Certainly, well, if we get one, once he's back and healthy, we'll add it to the presentation so that way we'll have it for future years. But he's one of our housing managers. So, he works in the Community Development Division and is part of our Housing Authority staff members. Here we have Charles Hernandez, has recently been promoted to Deputy Police Chief and celebrating 20 years with the City of Flagstaff. We also have Delmar. He is one of our library clerks, celebrating 20 years, part of our Economic Vitality Division. And Brian Hunsinger, our Water Services Manager. He's a manager out at our Lake Mary Water Treatment Plant, also celebrating 20 years. Melanie Yanni, she's one of our administrative specialists in Public Works. She helps support our solid waste team. So, if you ever have a question about recycling or trash pickup or bulky, she's probably one of the individuals that you're talking to. So, we want to take a moment to congratulate all of our March Work Anniversary milestones, and we're so glad that they're with us here at the city. Thanks for your time today.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have the City Manager Report.
Thank you, Mayor, council. It's a pretty brief report, and I have nothing to add to it. We do have a couple of divisions that'll be presenting to you. Thank you. First up is HR.
And instead, we have sustainability.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. Jenny Neiman, Climate Action Section Director. I am here this afternoon, standing in for Nicole Antonopoulos, Sustainability Division Director, who was unable to be here today. I'll be joined by Steve Thompson, our NEV Section Manager, as we provide the Sustainability Division's first biannual update. In these updates, we'll talk pretty briefly about the division, and then we'll go into brief updates on each section. We have a progress report on the Carbon Neutrality Plan in just two weeks, on April 8th. And so today, our update is mostly going to be focused on our Neighborhood Engagement and Volunteer Services section, led by Steve, our NEV's team. In terms of the division, we thought we would start this first formal update, just with a reminder of our vision. The Sustainability Division works to create a livable and low-impact community. At the end of the day, sustainability is really about our residents. It's about health, it's about well-being, it's about ensuring that all of our residents can achieve a high quality of life. This happens through a number of these things, but you'll see people centered throughout this vision statement. In terms of engagement, we work really hard to engage our community in a lot of different ways. This is because we truly rely on the residents in Flagstaff as well as our visitors to be taking sustainable actions in order to achieve our goals. We offer a wide range of activities for folks to get involved in. This can be helping folks get their hands dirty at a community garden, or maybe in a cleanup in the Rio de Flag, or just learning about how to make your home energy-efficient, even if you're a renter, or maybe how to prepare for emergencies. We've worked really hard on outreach over really the last decade to build a strong following on social media. We want to ensure our events and resources are as accessible to as many residents as possible. We put in daily work in terms of, in order to engage our residents and our community members, and to help them share actions as well. These are some of our most popular posts. And I will say, one of the interesting things is our most shared and popular posts are ones that allow residents to take action. Folks are really hungry for those action opportunities, and so we work really hard to continually provide a lot of opportunities for action, which we'll talk about later. Our newsletter is one of our longstanding tools that we use to engage folks. We send it on a monthly basis at the beginning of the month. Anyone can subscribe. We really like our MailChimp service, mainly because it allows us to sort of track activity, help us stay relevant. It also allows for our newsletter to be translated into really any language. And so that has just been a longstanding tool that we've used to ensure accessibility. Finally, just on the last division note, we are incredibly proud that our division works in all seven of our community priorities. We touch a number of objectives in each of these priorities. This, of course, then involves working with folks throughout our community and with folks across divisions within the City of Flagstaff organization. Moving into the climate section, again, we're going to be pretty brief here today. I am going to talk about our ADU pilot program as well as the Sustainability Commission before handing it over to Steve. Accessory drilling units, or ADUs, are small homes that can be built in backyards. I know council has heard about this project a bit lately. The Model Plans Library Project is a partnership between building safety, housing, planning, and sustainability that aims to make it easier to build an ADU in Flagstaff. We're thrilled to share that we're in the middle of our design contest. And so, we have collected 30, over 30 submissions from folks in our community who said, "I have an ADU design that I want to make available to the public." Those were graded by a group of city staff as well as community members and partner agencies. That group chose 10 winners. partner agencies. That group chose 10 winners, and those 10 winning designs are actually being voted on right now by the public. This will go to our Community Choice Awards. That will provide an additional incentive to the winning designs. Where this all goes is that we are going to create a Model Plan Library. It's going to launch in July 2025, and we will have, we're hoping to have 20 pre-approved plan sets that the community can choose from, and help them really envision, yes, I could put a little casita in my backyard. Yes, we could put some, you know, live-in grandmother quarters. We're really, really excited about this. We haven't done something like this before. One exciting thing about the competition is that we asked for elevated design from a sustainability perspective in our designs, and every design that we got back in the more than 30 submittals complied with it. No questions asked. And so it actually showed the sort of willingness of our design and architecture community to say, "Yeah, absolutely. We can do advanced energy. We can do advanced water. We can do all-electric buildings. All of the ADUs will be all-electric, and we can do solar-ready. We can do water sense." So it was just really, really exciting to see that. One really important thing I'll note is that the ADUs that we're going to be putting forward have variety as well. There will be studio designs. There will be one and two bedrooms. They go from 350 to 800 square feet. And all designs also have accessibility elements. Some plans are fully accessible. We want to ensure that these homes that are getting built can serve a wide variety of residents. Really quick, just a teaser alert. I do invite anyone listening to vote on their favorite designs. You can go to flagstaff.AZ.gov/ADUS to vote, and voting closes on Thursday at the end of the day. So this is just one design. This is another. There are nine other, eight other designs on there for folks to vote on, and we're excited to see what the community picks. Just a real quick update on our Sustainability Commission. They are always busy, but the last six months have involved them approving our Neighborhood Sustainability Grant Program. They work really hard on this program to review our applications, and then award microgrants to community organizations. We do have an event on Thursday night at the Market of Dreams that's going to showcase our award winners and the projects that are actually happening in the community. The Commission has recently put a lot of time into providing comments on the regional plan draft, as well as reviewing the results of the last cap project. In terms of what's ahead, there's a lot. To highlight, just a few. We'll be back at council in a couple of weeks for a few items. We've recently joined the International CDR Coalition to help us collaborate with cities across the world on carbon dioxide removal. We are recruiting right now for the Green Business Boot Camp, which starts on May 1st, as well as the Innovate Green Pitch Competition. This is where anyone can put forward an idea to help their business grow, and it's actually a competition where there are awards that are significant. That deadline is April 7th for businesses that want to participate. We've got a workshop next week on solar on April 1st, part of our Continued Consumer Protection Campaign, just to help folks learn how to buy solar, what to look for, and then a youth climate teach-in on April 26th, among other things. I'm going to now pass this over to Steve.
Thank you, Jenny. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council Members. My name is Stephen Thompson, and I serve as a manager within the Sustainability Division. And within Neighborhood Engagement and Volunteer Services, there are four main program areas: Waste Prevention, Food Systems, Community Stewardship, and Volunteerism. And I'll give a brief overview of what we've been up to for the last six months. In our Food Systems world, the community garden plot applications are currently open. We have over 100 applications submitted for our three community gardens that are currently open. There's only 71 plots that are available currently. So we're looking at ways to expand those opportunities, but this demonstrates a real desire in the community for access to growing spaces. In our Education and Outreach Initiatives, in the fall and winter, hosted several different events and workshops, seed harvesting, winterizing, and just kicked off the new series of workshops in our gardens called the Full Circle Garden Workshop Series, and we've had over 250 participants throughout those events so far. And then the Farmer Rancher Resource Fair, a few weeks ago, partnered with Flagstaff Family Food Center, Food Link, and other local growers to host this Farmer Rancher Resource Fair, where there are around 40 people who fought the snow that we had, to come out and connect with other community members and resources. And other initiatives that we're working on, the Animal Keeping Code, so worked, we're getting applications for people who are submitting permits to have animals in their backyards, and following some state regulations, working with Tiffany Antall to update our existing code, to be in line with those code updates, and working with Tiffany, who is fantastic. We updated the zoning code to allow urban farming as a land use. So really excited for those opportunities coming up, and renewing the Mayor's Monarch Pledge this year, sending some information your way, Mayor, on that, and planning for opportunities this coming June. And the USDA Food System Assessment Grant, I was here about a month ago to present on updates, and there will be more information on the Food Action Plan coming to you this In our Waste Prevention Programming, since October, the programs have diverted more than 32,000 pounds of food waste from going to the landfill. And food waste and other waste as well. The Residential Food Scrap Program has diverted more than 17,000 pounds on its own. Drop-off day events and fix-it clinics have helped divert other types of waste, whether it's electronic waste, hazardous products, from going into the landfill. The drop-off days are twice a year, fix-it clinics four times a year currently. Then in our Education Outreach for Waste Prevention, we have some really dedicated staff, Casey Rapacki, and an AmeriCorps member, Brianna Rilio, who go into schools and provide education at schools and for organizations throughout the community on how to put your waste in the right place, how to recycle in Flagstaff, and how to prevent waste in general. Really proud of the statistic on the screen for Recycle by City, which is an online platform that community members can sign up for, scheduling, information about when is their trash going to be picked up, when is their recycling going to be picked up. And with our work with Solid Waste, we've updated information on that website and expanded our usership by 6,000 people in the last six months. And we're looking at restructuring our Chicken Coop and Composter Rebate Program to, for greater access, just to make it easier for people to fill out and access that rebate Our Community Stewards Program, you'll see signs all over town for Adoptus. So Adopta Foots, Adopta Nav, and Adopta Stream. Since October, we have supported over 380 volunteers in their litter cleanup and invasive plant species removal efforts. And when it says 133 bags, those are 33-gallon bags. So it's quite a bit of volume being removed from streams, trails, and our streets, over 44 events. In the Snow Hero Program this year, I want to see these numbers increase over the years. So we were able to pair successfully 13 out of the 15 residents who applied for the program. So always looking for expansion of that program, but that's a pretty good percentage, at least. And we didn't have much snow, unfortunately, this year. Next on the list, Winter Recreation Cleanups. These have been months into planning between our staff, Coqueneau County, and the US Forest Service to tackle litter at popular snowplay areas. Still going to host some of these events, but we're also redirecting some of these efforts to assist with some of the fire preparedness efforts. So on the first Saturday in April, we are working with Open Space and members from Wild and Fire to host a Pine Needle Raking Day in the neighborhood of Railroad Springs. More information to come on that later, and other opportunities for community members to help prepare their areas or their neighborhoods in case of an incident. Neighborhood Engagement, we are expanding our opportunities within the Community Stewards Programming to be more present at Neighborhood Association meetings and different organization groups to offer our support. How can we help you host a volunteer event or initiative in your neighborhood? We're currently in planning with Mobile Haven to host an event with that neighborhood. And then the Popular Watershed Cleanup Series, we're planning for that to start in June. And that lends itself really well to this next portion of the presentation about volunteerism. So volunteering in Flagstaff is becoming more and more important. And this particular initiative is, to start off with, is the Employee Volunteer Program. Over the past year, well, I guess, sorry, over the past six months, city staff have participated in a variety of volunteering. And this is just a short list of the dozens of opportunities our staff have committed and provided service in outside of their working hours. Over 90 different events accumulating over 1,000 hours. The photo there is a group of city staff who went and picked up litter in the community. So you can see that small group tackling quite a bit. You can see the giant pile of litter behind them piled into that truck. Just a review in 2024, it was almost 2,500 hours of cumulative service of eligible volunteer opportunities that staff committed, on top of the work that staff already do in the community. So that's pretty exciting. And 217 employees benefited from that as part of the awards program to receive some PTO. Now, looking at the outward-facing side of volunteering. To make it easier for folks within the city organization to track and manage and onboard and recruit volunteers, and for community members to sign up for opportunities, this short, this long list of divisions, IT, pros, code compliance, the library, HR, risk management, procurement, all assisted with the procurement of a centralized volunteer platform, volunteer Flagstaff. And we have our soft launch as of January, where we're starting to roll this program out to all divisions within the organization, so people can recruit volunteers and streamline that process to make it easier for staff to not only recruit and advertise, but it's easier on the backend for tracking, for sharing reports, and telling the story of the volunteer impacts on the community. So looking ahead, this training and rollout phase, we're identifying existing staff within the organization who currently manage and onboard and train volunteers, and then updating all of our resources to make it easier as we develop new opportunities and new offerings, always continuing to refine. So volunteer dot Flagstaff AZ dot gov. So there are a lot of opportunities on there already. And looking ahead, the Neighborhood Engagement and Volunteer Services Section offers numerous events throughout the year. All of the items listed on here are within the next three months. And the, one of the ones that I want to invite everyone to, the Earth Day Celebration, hosted this, this year on April 19th, Saturday, April 19th, 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. over at Busch Master Park. Hope to see you all there. And thank you so much for your time, and if you have any questions, Jenny and I are available.
Thank you so much. Counsel, questions, comments? Great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Counsel, now we'll hear from Human Resources Risk Management. We have, pardon me, a team who's been working on this report. They're excited to report to you. We'll be hearing from Sheila Ryan and Jen Caputo, Sarah Sorn and Karen Capps, and they're making their way down, and I think we're queuing up the presentation. Thank you.
Take two. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Counsel. Jennifer Caputo, I am the Deputy Human Resources Director. Thank you for allowing us some time this afternoon to provide an update on our team. I'm going to do just that and start off with a little more information specifically about the HRRM team. We have continued to experience some turnover throughout the past few years. So current state is that we are a team of FT, of 15 FTE. We have 13 on the human resources side and two on the risk side. As of today, we are down five, but the good news is that we have one starting on Monday. That's going to be our Benefits Analyst, Emily Carter. So she's coming on board. The other good news is that we just completed two recruitments on Friday. One is for our risk manager, and the other one is for one of our classification and compensation positions. So those are underway. We're moving forward on those recruitments. That leaves us two, one of which is a training position, and the other is the HR Risk Management Director position, which Greg has been working on securing a recruiter for that, and we'll be moving forward on that one in the not-too-distant future. That's the team itself. The other update we have is, you probably noticed as you came in the building today, the construction of our office. So we're appreciative of all the staff in the building that are putting up with the noise as they're starting the demolition to get our new office underway. So that's the update that I have on the team, and I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Sarah, who's going to give you some more information on recruitment and class and comp.
Thank you, Jen. Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Let me advance the slides here a little bit. I've just got some quick recruitment updates, some really good news to share. Our current vacancy rate is actually trending down. We're at 11.34%, which means that we have unfilled FTE of 102.27. So that's a really good number. Once again, trending down. Our budgeted FTE total is just over 905. FTE stands for Full Time Equivalent. So someone who's working 40 hours a week or more is going to be your single FTE. We also provided some history there. Once again, in January, we reported that we were at a 12.25%. So we continue to fill our openings. Current job postings, this will be on Friday, will be up at 22. All of our job postings come out on Fridays at FlagstaffCityCareers.com. So for anyone who's interested in looking for a role with the city, we recommend that you go to this website. Go ahead and set up your profile. You can even choose to receive job alerts for certain types of experiences or qualifications. So we'll send those right to your email inbox if you register on FlagstaffCityCareers.com. For current open requisitions that we're working, these are outside of postings. So we're also doing screening, interviewing, job offers in progress, background screening. That total number is 56. Our current time to fill is 78, which is still beating our municipal peer average of 127. And in March, our days to fill actually came down to 62. So continuing to see improvements in that area as well. And applications remain up so far this year. We're at 1,299 applications. That's up 7%. Once again, we were up over 30% overall in last year. We continue to participate in some really great events around the city. Last week, we actually hosted a Walk-In Wednesday with our Water Services Team. That was an incredible event. If anyone is familiar with the Flagstaff Reddit, they just started posting monthly events, and this was the number-two-most-upvoted event by the community going to that website. So really excited to see that. We had incredible attendance from both internal Flagstaff city employees, as well as the community. A lot of science majors, engineering majors, construction. A lot of people came out to talk with our team about potential openings. This was an area where we had a lot of difficulty filling positions, but with being able to bring our water services operators to market, we actually have no openings currently, but one job posting coming up this Friday. So once again, some really incredible news on what's been happening in our area. In addition to this Water Services event, which I want to take a moment just to thank Lucas Vaca, he was our tour guide. We were able to bring the community members through different parts of our plant to be able to show them the behind-the-scenes workings of what we do. to be able to show them the behind-the-scenes workings of what we do to support the community in the city. But in addition to that, our recruiter, Valeria Garcia, she did a fantastic job putting together the event and coordinating with the Water Services Division to be able to make this the great event that it was. We want to continue holding these Walk-In Wednesdays for specific divisions as they have recruitment needs. We're also having some other events coming up. I jumped ahead. We are going to be at Coquenino Community Job Fair on April the 16th. We're also going to be at Coquenino High School's Job Fair on April the 18th. And we have also put together a number of managers across our divisions to attend an advisory council with the Coquenino Community College to provide input on what the community would like to see as far as what's being taught in their programs so that we can better educate our students to be ready to have that entry-level career pipeline into our available openings. So lots of exciting movement happening there. I also want to share that we're having a citywide career fair on May the 2nd. We're in still the planning stages for that. But more information will be coming out via social media and other channels very soon. And then I also wanted to do a quick update on compensation. So the city has had a goal to review 25% of our classifications each year. And as of this fiscal year, we have collected data on all of our positions at the city. We recently went through the budget team process, and it is an over $4 million investment that we are excited to share that is going to have significant impact on our city employees. We are going to be making market adjustments for 76 classifications, and the total impact is going to be 311 employees. Once again, we shared that we have had some really positive feedback about our water services operators. One of our water services managers actually shared, you know, it was like a ghost town in here, and now all the cubicles are full. And, you know, just really having a positive impact. So we had adjustments that happened last year that have also impacted our previously hard-to-fill roles that also include equipment operators, streetlight technicians, water services and public works supervisors, engineering and IT analysts. So we expect that we're going to continue to have a lot of really good forward progress in that area as well as we bring our compensation to market and also continue a lot of these recruitment initiatives that have been put into place. And with that, I'll go ahead and pass over to Sheila Jewell.
Hi there. I'm Sheila Actually Ryan. And I'm a Human Resources Manager here at the city of Flagstaff. And I'm just talking a little bit today about our new employee orientation. We have had a new employee orientation for quite a while here at the city, but we've made some revisions to it. Last year, what we did was we'd bring them in on their first day usually, and they would sit with us for four hours. And we would give them a lot of information all at once. We felt that that might be a little too much information to ask them to absorb there on their first day when they're trying to understand their job and figure out where they work and everything like that. So we've moved to a different program where on their first day, they will go and meet with their team and their manager, and they will be assigned a specialized online learning plan. And there's about seventeen short courses that are all the same for the learning plans. Where they differ is in the risk management courses that they're assigned so that we have, office workers are not receiving an hour of MSDS and things like that. So it's more specialized towards them. So hopefully that they feel like that applies more to their position. Then what we do is after we, they're with us anywhere between 45 to 60 days, they will go and attend a live training with us. So it's approximately two months later. So we just had our first one last Thursday. So our January hires attended the March class. And we had nine different presenters. So they get a variety of personalities. They get to meet a lot of people that work here at the city of Flagstaff. And we try to introduce them to some of those programs that maybe they might be interested in, that are really designed to be employee-oriented. So we've got the volunteer program and opportunities and how they can earn additional time off. We talk about the champions, our awards and recognition. We talk about the wellness program and some things along those lines. So we've had some good feedback on it, and we will continue to ask what they are looking for at that orientation and revise it as needed. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Counsel members. I am the interim Risk Manager Karen Capps. And I am proud to present to you some statistics that we gathered in risk management. Can't take credit solely. When Maria Robinson was still here, she started these efforts. This first graph is our liability incidents that the city is responsible for. We had a 30% decrease in incident reports overall from 2023 and a 12% decrease in incidents that actually became claims. Big, significant savings there. I want to talk a little bit about collisions. We saw a 34, our target was 15%, but we got a 34% decrease in vehicle collisions overall from '23 to '24. We do have an 11% increase in preventable collisions. But fortunately, April is defensive and distracted driving month. So we'll be putting an intense effort on city drivers, both in those categories, with specialized training. And I want to talk a little bit about employee incidents. Research shows that 65% of job seekers will research the culture of a future potential employer. And that's why this statistic is very important. We had a 6% decrease in employee injuries over 2023, but we experienced a 39% increase in OSHA recordables. And what OSHA recordables means is that the individual had medical treatment, and it wasn't just an information-only report. So although that looks like a huge number, some of that was attributed to maybe even just three claims that were very large. What is important about these numbers is that it's reflecting on the reputation of the community as an employer that really seeks to be a safe environment for their employees and for their citizens. And that's why I track these numbers regularly. We also had 52,000 in subrogation that we brought back to the city from damage that was caused by citizens in the community. And we also experienced almost 17,000 in restitution from our courts, something else that risk management tracks and goes after. Some upcoming activity for risk management. As you heard, they closed the position on Friday, and so there should be a permanent fill pretty soon, which means instead of operating as a division of one, hopefully we'll have two right behind it. We'll also have a risk management specialist. This is special events season. I have had a floodgate of 42 certificate of insurance come in that I have to review. But it means that we are an active and vibrant community. We have insurance renewals coming up. You'll be seeing that probably sometime in the May-June timeframe. But I'll be meeting with AMRPR, our Arizona Municipal Risk Retention Pool, in April to look at those renewals. I have feelers out to some of the divisions to make sure I have the right number of vehicles and the right number of employees. And then we just completed annual fit testing. Fit testing is part of our respiratory program, making sure that our employees are safe when they are working within these high-risk divisions. We have that risk protection program for the water, facilities, and parks departments. Water just completed and is all set for their, for meeting compliance, OSHA compliance for our respiratory program. And facilities and parks comes up in May and June. And that's it for HR and risk management. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments? Thank you so much and great work.
I echo that. Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. And that concludes my report unless there's any questions for me.
I do not see any. All right. Next up, we have discussion on project to redesign city logo and city seal.
Good afternoon, Mayor Daggett, members of council. For the record, this is Chris Rhodey. I'm the Special Programs Manager from the Division of Communication and Civic Engagement. And it's my pleasure to be with you today, joined by members from the Northern Arizona University Visual Design Lab. And they'll be taking on part of this presentation as well. I'll get it kicked off, and then I'll hand it over to them to talk about the fun stuff. But I want to talk about the process we've gone through in this project. Kind of just to give a background, I know that our council has actually rolled over since this project began. And with projects of this size, it's been played out over about a year. So I just want to briefly recap that and go over a couple of other items. So this item began when then-Vice Mayor Asland put this item on as a fair request. We came to you January of 2024, so a little more than a year ago, with some proposals and kind of looking for some direction from you all on how to proceed with it. We probably weren't at the time. We needed a little bit more of a recommendation from city staff to get you all where you were comfortable making recommendations. So we came back, thought about some things, engaged with the Visual Design Lab as a potential community partner in this project, and then came back to you all again with a more clear-cut proposal of how to go forward with it, which you gave us the direction to follow. And that was in April of 2024, so almost a year ago is how long we've actually been working on implementing this project. It involved using the resources we have with our partner NAU for the design aspect. And we assembled a working group to kind of oversee the project. That way, it served as a representative body that could guide the project without having to come here and do this all the time and take up valuable time that other divisions need to put items in front of you. So we set up the working group in the summer of last year, and they got to work on a few things. And the Visual Design Lab and their team got started when the semester started in fall of last year. And we've been working together ever since. And so today, we're giving you kind of our, where we're at, and we'll see where this goes. So this is our current city seal. You may think it's the one that's on the wall behind you or whatnot. That is not the city seal. The city seal is this, and it's not even a different version than this. It is this grainy image with all of the imperfections in it. That is what is literally in our city code defining our current city seal. It says the word "seal" in big letters, bigger letters than anything else on the seal. And it includes the date of our original incorporation as a town, May 26, 1894. It's not a seal that is well-known in our community, and I can tell you that confidently because I grew up in this community. And I had never seen this before until I started working on this project and found this section of city code and saw this icon. So it's not anything that we use in the publicly facing services. It's really, it goes on the corner of a piece of paper. And even then, we have that little device that you imprint it onto a little gold star. And even that, if you look at it and hold it up, you can barely see what it says on it because it's so poorly defined that the lines don't come through. Because this is the only image we have. So it's probably the image we sent to the printer, and they printed literally this with all its imperfections. Our city logo, on the other hand, you're probably more familiar with. It's the elk with the peaks and the flag coming out of it. This is the one that we see all over the place. I want to note that it's not actually defined in city code anywhere. And I actually don't believe it's even trademarked in its current form. So we've been using it for quite a long time. But it's not in that same level of formality that it could be in. It also means that there's a lot of different versions that are floating out there. So you're probably familiar with the biggest one I have in the center of the screen. But there are different versions, including on the one behind you that's painted, which is a very nice version, but that exists nowhere else. On the flag behind you, which is a third version. And then there's many other ones you may see in Public Works and other city vehicles moving around with one that has kind of two ponders of pine rounds in the corners of it. And then you can see in the bottom corner, our police uses a version that has different colorations as well. So while there's a general kind of look to it, there isn't anything that's well-defined or institutionalized anywhere in anything more than we've been using it as our city logo. One thing to note about this is it's often mistaken as our city seal because it looks like a city seal. It's really complex. It has a lot of details here and there. It depicts an entire landscape, which is not what you would usually see in a logo. It's what you would normally see in a city seal. It also has around the outside, City of Flagstaff, Arizona, with the established date. And that's something you don't often see in a full logo as well. So really, our existing logo works better as a city seal. And part of our project of designing a new logo is to keep this. We've heard so much from our community that they like and they identify with this symbol. We don't want to do away with it. And I want to make clear that we're not proposing doing away with it. We want to take this existing icon and make it into a city seal that is a better use for it, but allows it to continue its use in a formal setting in our city. So I mentioned the working group we set up that was meant to guide this project. And this is kind of a really unique thing about the way we've gone about this process over the last year that I want to highlight. It's worked really well for us. We wanted a group that was big enough that it brought a lot of different perspectives and viewpoints from our community to the discussion without it being so large that we couldn't get anything done and get to a single unified design. So we picked a few of our committees and local commissions of volunteers that worked with us with their unique and diverse backgrounds. They brought all those to the table. So we had Alicia Hayes from our Heritage Preservation Commission. And we thought that was a good fit because that's a commission that specializes in understanding the history and culture of our city so we could have that present. Michael Cruz from the Beautification and Public Arts Commission to make sure that whatever we were doing still looked really good and was pretty at the end of the day. Justin Cuevas, who I believe may be actually be here in the back of the room from our Employee Advisory Committee. And this was the only city employee we had here because while this, a city logo is certainly a symbol that's used by a community at large that people identify with it, it's also the symbol of our organization. So we thought it was important to have somebody that works in our organization at the table. We had Angelica Sanchez from the Commission on Diversity Awareness to make sure that what we were doing was inclusive and thoughtful to all the different communities that are in the city of Flagstaff. And we had two members from our indigenous commission, Mariah Zavala and Daryl Marks. And we had two of them because they asked for that. First of all, they said that's a traditional indigenous practice to have a representative from both genders present in decision-making bodies. And it also worked really well for us because they come from different backgrounds themselves. And our indigenous population in Flagstaff is not a monolith. We have 14 different tribes. They consider this area sacred. So having additional diversity in that community was really impactful. And they were able to give us a lot of really good information about the appropriate way to represent our tribal communities. So we've added a couple components to our proposals here today that have inspiration in indigenous symbols. And they made sure that that was done in a respectful way, and it was inclusive of all of the different tribes. So it's not just one being represented, but that everybody could see something that was important in the design. So I want to thank all of these members who helped us oversee this project. They took a lot of time. They did a lot of work, and they did it all for free. And just as they've contributed their time to our commissions, they did to this project. And I want to recognize them for that and thank them for their work. And their work is better because they were a part of it. So in addition to working group, and I'm just seeing now that I made a typo. This is actually our design team, not our working group, so I apologize for that. But it's led by Patricia Murphy, who's the Director of the Visual Design Lab and a professor of digital communication at NAU. So she was the teacher of this class. And then our designers, who will be presenting to you shortly, is Karen Havelera Morales, Adrian Chavez, Kyra, oh boy, you just told me how to say your name one more time. What was it? Gooj. Okay, thank you. I'm so sorry about that. Becca Overfelt, Sofia Gonzalez, and Anna Keller. They've done tremendous work for us this year. And while they're pursuing their degrees at NAU, they've been great to work with. And they're going to get to talk about some of their designs here later on. I want to put this project into some context because these kinds of things happen all over the country and throughout the state. But the way we're going about this is really unique, and it- But the way we're going about this is really unique and it offers a couple of different advantages. One of them is the cost. When we looked at this project originally, we looked at what other cities around Arizona had been doing as they've gotten new logos over the last couple of years. So we looked at a number of different cities and we saw that it was very common for them to spend tens of thousands of dollars to hire a design firm to do that work. The most we saw was actually $65,000, which is roughly a salary of a city employee that they spent just to redesign their logo. But by partnering with Visual Design Lab, this comes at no cost to the city. They're doing this completely for free, which is, I mean, what an opportunity for us to engage both with a community partner, people that are in our community, and to get this on the backend. So I wanted to highlight that. And I also wanted to say that the staff time has not been that, has not been that overbearing. I've worked primarily on this project, which has been attending kind of an every-other-week meeting with our design team. That's an hour or two here and there. We've certainly communicated with the public and set up a few things that's taken an hour or two here or there. But I can truly tell you this hasn't been more than a few hours a week at the most of my time. And that's been about it. Our partnership with them doing the design work and our working group driving the process has really allowed our staff involvement just to be kind of making sure everyone's talking to each other, making sure the work is continuing properly, and then letting the people that bring the expertise and the diverse viewpoints let them drive it. And it's been a really nice opportunity to let that play out that way. I also want to say that if we go forward with adopting one of these designs, we want to implement this digitally first, which means that you'll see it on our website, probably some email signatures, those kinds of things. But the areas where it's a very easy change to make, where it's simple as swapping out a JPEG somewhere, are the first places we'll see it because that is very low cost and low impact. It won't require us to build any new buildings or tear down any existing signage in our community. We don't want to go through that. That's a cost we don't need to have. So what we would do is wait until all of those physical embodiments need replacement for another reason. So as we buy new vehicles, they'll probably have it on them. As signs break, we'll replace them with new ones that have the new logo on them. But we're not going to go out and tear down things that are perfectly fine at expense to the city when we don't need to. So it'd be a phased approach in the real world and then probably a little bit quicker digitally. Part of the process that we undertook here was, though we had our working group that had, was it self-diverse and representative of our community as best we could do, we wanted to hear from the public directly. So there were two different times that we reached out to all of our constituents in the city to hear what they had to say on it. The first of them was as we started the project, right at the fall of last year, right as our design team was getting to work. We asked for some really basic, broad questions about things like what are members of the public identifying with? What colors? What kind of events? What the history of our city that they were most attached to? So we knew kind of where to start. What are the things that they're proud of as Flagstaffians? What are the things that they think of when they think of our community? And they told us a lot of what I think you could expect. They really liked a lot of greens for the forestry and the natural environment we're in. They liked darker blues with our mountains and our sky, the reds of sandstones and terracotta and things like that. They liked gold for the Aspens and NAU, and then white for snow and black for the stars and the night skies. We heard all of those kinds of things, but that gave us an idea of some of those things. And then we heard all the cool things that have happened in Flagstaff's history, which is frankly, it was a really cool thing to get to see because you don't often see them all listed together. And just seeing one person's and other person's go through to talk about the history of Route 66 and logging and the railroad and our dark sky ordinance, all of the astronomy and space exploration that's happened here, from the discovery of Pluto to astronauts training, the Indigenous culture, there was so much of it that came through that was, it was so cool to see it all together. And it gave us a really good idea of what we want to represent and what the community stands for. So the working group and the designers here took all of that and incorporated it and used that as a kind of a leaping off point where they began their projects. And, you know, not all of these are presented overtly, and I want to say that they shouldn't be because that's way too many things. You wouldn't even be able to tell what they all were, but we were able to take some of those and incorporate a lot of them into the final designs. We got to the point of last winter, over the winter break for the students, that we kind of had a nice lapse where they were going to be gone for a little while, not doing design work, which was great because they're in a class and need to be kept busy. And it gave us an opportunity to go back to the public one more time, once we had a few fleshed-out designs, to see what they thought of the work we were doing. And this one, we got so much response on this, it was almost surprising. It was surprising. We received over 1,000 responses to a survey we put online, and it composed of two parts. It was first a poll. We showed the three different concepts. And we asked them just to tell us your favorite and your second favorite, so that we could go through and see if there was, you know, almost kind of like a rank-choice voting system informally. And that way, we got to see which ones they preferred over each other, and we could see, you know, which ones resonated better with the community. But that wasn't enough because that doesn't tell you, you know, people could like all three of them or they could hate all three of them. So we needed to get a more nuanced approach as well. And we asked people to tell us what they liked and disliked about each of the specific designs. So there was, give us your rankings, and then tell us about why. And that gave us a really good opportunity to see what parts of them were appreciated, what parts of them people resonated with. And I'll say that there was one design in this poll that blew the others out of the water, frankly. I thought it would be a lot closer than it was, but it, in a poll of three designs, came in with roughly 75% of the vote, which, you know, for those of you that have gone through those elections with a lot of individuals, you know, you can win sometimes with 35, 40% of the vote, but not here. It was pretty clear which one the public preferred out of those three. But that wasn't the end of the process because all those comments told us how we could improve them. So we took two forward from that point, incorporated all the feedback we received from those three designs, and made them even better. And I can say that, and it's a pretty strong word, but I feel pretty confident about it. And we've got two for you today. I'm going to turn it over to the students here and the design team in a second, that'll get to talk about the ins and outs of the design work because they're the ones that actually did the work to put them together. And at the end, we'll tell you what the recommendation was of our working group. And we'll, I'll come back to the dais and seek your direction for next steps. But at this point, I'll turn it over to Professor Murphy from the Visual Design Lab.
Thank you, Chris. I'd like to have the students line up here if it's possible. Thank you, guys. Good afternoon, Mayor Daggett, Vice Mayor, and council members. Thank you so much for having us here today. My name is Patricia Murphy, and I'm a Professor of Visual Communication in the School of Communication at NAU. And I've been a teacher there for 19 years, and I am the Director and Founder of the Visual Design Lab. It's a design studio that works with community to create design work and help, and it's all volunteer work. It's all for free, and we mostly work with nonprofit organizations. But we have worked with NAU as well, as well as the City of Flagstaff, of course, and Coconino County. So the Visual Design Lab... So one of the things that I wanted to mention, and Chris explained exactly the way that we worked together with the working group, and it has been an amazing experience for the students and for myself. But we want to acknowledge, because of the way that the public gave comments, and there's a lot of love for the logo that exists right now, we wanted to acknowledge that and let you know that we understand the historical significance that this logo represents and that it's a heritage of the city and its identity. And when I teach my students to create logos and to design brand identities, we talk about certain things. And one of the things is scalability, versatility, simplicity, and the way to use a logo in many different ways, right? In a JPEG, in a website, in a billboard, or on a stamp. So there are many issues with the logo because of its intricate design. And so when we looked at it and we understood, even though I've been here in Flagstaff for more than 20 years, I didn't understand so much of that love that people had for this image. We wanted to look at it again and see how we could use that in a simplified way for the seal. So you will see all of that in a minute. First, I want to, well, Chris already introduced the students, but I wanted to... Are you guys in order? That's pretty great. So the team, the design team, that started this project in the Visual Design Lab, and now they are an undergraduate research group, and will present at the Undergraduate Research Symposium at NAU soon, in April 25. Is Adrian Chavez, Karen Havalera Morales, Anna Keller, Sofia Gonzalez, Kyra Jean, and Rebecca Overfelt. You guys are not in order. This is the beloved logo and that we respect. So the objective, so we were contacted with a specific objective of redesigning the current city logo to create a more modern, cohesive, versatile brand identity that reflects the city's unique characteristics, values, and future vision. And the words that were given to us was vibrant, diverse, unique, and natural. So a couple of things to keep in mind before we show you the designs. The design team, Visual Communication Program, went through a long process of research, concept development, and production, as well as auditing all of the different representations of this brand that I used in comparison with other brands and logos here in Flagstaff and in Arizona. And the working group reviewed over 100 sketches and concepts, and the design team worked on revisions, refining ideas based on extensive stakeholder and community feedback. These are the final concept suggestions. Each concept is unique and comes with different points of inspiration. And the mockups or images that we will show the logo represented in are just conceptual, and the purpose is purely to showcase the brand in use. So before starting any sketches or designs, the working group gathered input from the public seeking their thoughts, ideas, and concepts related to the City of Flagstaff and what they would like to see in a potential new logo. Here are just a couple of images that we used for inspiration of our beautiful land and city. Throughout the process, and you'll see on the next slide, the three logos that were shown to the public and that we got feedback from and were able to refine and narrow down the options resulting on the final designs that we are presenting today. These are the three concepts that were put on the website survey and got the feedback from the public. As you can see in the next two concepts that the students are going to present, they're not exactly as the ones that have voted first and second place. They have been refined based on the feedback that was given to us by both the working group and the public. So the first one, I'd like to have Karen and Adrian here to present.
Thank you, Patricia. Good afternoon, Mayor, council members of the council. My name is Adrian Chavez, and I am here today to present the logo design that was created by myself and my team member Karen. To start, I'd like to walk you through the elements that make up the complete logo, which you can see here on the right. Taking you to the left side, the logo's holding shape combines a circle and a compass, representing the four directions which hold deep significance in many Indigenous worldviews. These directions symbolize the balance between physical, emotional, spiritual, and mental aspects of life. They are central to ceremonies, teachings, and promote harmony with nature. By incorporating these elements, we aim to honor the cultural heritage of Indigenous peoples and acknowledge their ongoing influence in our community. Sorry. The next element we incorporated represents Flagstaff's famous dark sky. We've depicted this with seven stars, which serve as a clever nod to our life at 7,000 feet of elevation. The stars also pay homage not only to the Indigenous peoples, but also their beliefs and storytelling, as those stars have been integrated in visual arts of ancestral history. Additionally, a silhouette of the mountains helps to break up the sky element and provides a scenic view that is a hallmark of Flagstaff's natural landscape. And then finally, we wanted to capture the essence of Flagstaff's ponderosa forest. This geometric representation of the pines in the logo is designed to showcase the fullness and beauty of the forest. It is clean, simple, and effective at representing Flagstaff's lush environment. These are the three elements that compose the basis of design logo one. Here you'll see the different variations of the logo that it can take. Each format has its own use cases depending on how you would like to use it. On the left here is the large emblem design that incorporates the city name and state. On the top right, we have a horizontal variation of the logo, which features the symbolic icon alongside the type. Beneath that, you'll see the vertical variation offers this different layout of the same key elements. I'd like to note that this design is made with a two-color palette, though that can be adjusted if necessary and used in a complete one-color version as needed. Here are some concept images that we would like to show on how this brand can be used in real life. These are purely conceptual. Once again, it could be completely changed depending on the setting. The left here, we have a unique stationery set with business cards, letterheads, and things like that. On the right, we have, of course, a flag, which could be changed, could not be changed. Here we have the logo on the side of a truck, a banner, which we see a lot downtown and throughout the NAU campus, as well as a building sign outside of an official organization. Currently, that right image has the city logo, so this is a good mockup to show the new one. The Flagstaff City Government's social media also has a pretty decent presence on Instagram. So here we have that represented through the screen as well, and on the right side with the website logo. And now to introduce the second logo design, I'd like to welcome my design team members, Anna and Sofia.
Thank you so much.
Hi, Mayor and Vice Mayor and Council. My name is Anna Keller, and this is my design partner Sofia Gonzalez. And we're going to be presenting to you logo two, the other design that was brought for the City of Flagstaff logo redesign. So the logo two concept is made up of all, a bunch of different elements, and we broke it down for you, just like the other one. To start off, we have a holding shape that pays homage to our Route 66 buildings that are just as old as the city because a lot of windows are in this shape like this, and that is the holding shape for all of these. We also have the dark skies seen before in the other logo with our plus sign stars, which were the Indigenous recommendation of the delegates. And there are also seven stars to showcase the 7,000 feet of elevation that we are at. And to finish it off, we also have our own version of the ponderosa pines and the peaks, which were considered very important for the final design. And that's what makes up the entire design here. So just like the other logo, there is a horizontal and a vertical design, and these can be implemented in different places, and they're different because they can be implemented in different places. So similar to the other one, it could be on a website, one can be on a billboard and other things like that. But the difference for this one is because the text is outside of the design, it needs to be treated as its own standalone symbol, which is why when it is treated as an emblem, the words of City Council Flagstaff are implemented in place of the ponderosa pines inside. So similar to the other one, here are some implications in real-life settings that can be used. We have it on a billboard on a truck, and once again, these are purely conceptual and can also be changed. And that's all I have for this one. So I'm going to take it over to our seal redesign, which will be presented by Becca and Kyra.
Thank you.
So before Becca and Kyra come in, I just wanted to, once again, make sure that you understand that we recognize the historical and emotional significance of the City of Flagstaff logo. And to honor this connection, they proposed simplifying the lines and adopting it, I'm sorry, as the official seal that would typically be embossed, stamped, or gold-stamped. Again, this is the original logo. The key differences between what you're going to see and the original logo are the simplicity of the lines, the use of black only to ensure that the seal functions effectively as a stamp, embossing or gold leaf application, integrate the elk into the environment rather than making it a focal point, as well as a new version of the elk and one without it, orient the flag correctly to reflect proper US positioning and look more polished, refine the typography to create a cohesive and unified look with the proposed logo, logo typography and identity, and remove the phrase "established by 1882" as requested by the working group.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. I'm Rebecca Overfelt, and I worked on this seal design concept with my teammate Kyra.
I'm Rebecca Overfelt and I worked on this seal design concept with my teammate Kyra. Similar to what Chris said at the beginning of our presentation, we kind of wanted to take this symbol of the city and bring it forward, not as a logo but as a seal design, kind of simplify and make a more cohesive design for a seal that can be seen in our formal city environment. These elements of the original kind of logo don't translate very well into a stamped or embossed design. We wanted to honor that into what and create what you see today. The elk in the original seal is a little bit vague and doesn't have any distinguishing features. So in our process, we decided to pin down a more specific design based off of the elk here in Flagstaff. What you see here in this design on the right is a Rocky Mountain elk. It's native to the northern parts of Arizona. We also brought the Flagstaff mountains and depicted a tree line of ponderosa pines from the original into our design as well. We kept a similar composition to preserve the integrity of the original and make a cohesive environmental design. And you can see that here. These, moving forward, are some conceptual ideas of how the seal would be used, embossed or stamped. And I think, do believe that is it. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you.
And a big thank you again to our design team. I wanted to just finish off by thanking them and then letting you all know as well that, we'll put this one on the screen so you can see both of these options. The logo on the left, the green one, is the one that was recommended by our working group for adoption. So at our meeting in February, we took a vote and the working group voted for that one, but that is nonminding. It is a recommendation to you and you all are welcome to take that action, take a different action, or take no action. So if you have any questions or comments, I or the design team are happy to answer them. If not though, that would be the recommendation of staff as well as to give us direction to bring this back with an ordinance change. And we would incorporate that with by replacing the city seal as it's described in our city code, we would add a section that describes the logo and update those with your direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. This is an exciting, exciting time. And thank you, Aslan, for bringing this forward. I've been really happy with the process and I want to thank Professor Murphy and her team, the Visual Design Lab, the community. Everyone, you know, has an opinion and it was fun to watch all of it unfold. And thank you for the person that brought me the elk. So I've been pretty outspoken that I actually like our current logo, but I understand that we need to update. And I've been saying that from the get-go, that I get that, you know, this is exciting, fresh, new. But when it comes to the seal, I'm going to state once again that I think we should keep the elk in our seal. There is something of value to preserving that history and I'm thankful that you brought that up, Professor. And I want to stick with that. I do like the recommendation of the green logo. And I think, I like where it's gone. I can see all of the work and the detail and all of the thoughtfulness in this, so congratulations on coming up with that for our city. And I'm anxious to see what the rest of council says.
Councilmember Aslan?
Thank you Mayor and thank you Vice Mayor. Thank you so much, Chris and Heidi. And I also want to give a shout out to Councilmember Deb Harris, who was here when we started these conversations and had some critical, I think, insights. You know, I want to thank you as well Patricia and to the whole team. I see Ally's here too. Oh, there she is. So I feel a lot of NEU pride in the room and I really like where this is going. I am very pleased with the whole process all the way through. It's been, it's been really nice to just sort of tune in, excuse me, very casually throughout the process, taking a backseat, knowing that, you know, a lot of professional minds were working on this. And the way that it was, the collaborative process, which could have been very messy, was actually very streamlined and very well done. Just a couple of thoughts. I'm really excited. I agree with the general consensus, it seems, for the green logo. I'll talk about that in just a second. I also really like the second seal concept. The elk just really does something in contrast to the one without it. And I'm glad we're keeping the flag in the seal too. I think that was stated very clearly that that was important for people to be able to see that remain. I really like the second logo. I think it's well done. It's very balanced. When I look at the, what do you call that? The shape, the holding shape? What I see is a snow globe or an observatory, which is kind of cool. I do think it's a little too whimsical for a city. You know, this might be a great design for a business to sort of borrow from or not outright steal. I wouldn't recommend that. But be inspired by. I really like the inclusion of the crosshatches in the four directions. I wasn't entirely sure what that meant, but it seemed to me that it was about, it had indigenous importance. And so that just kind of clearly and very instinctively comes up. I like the crosshatch stars as well. I wonder, you know, I don't want to, there's several little things I could micromanage in all these, but that's just my personality type. I have fun with graphic design and it's, you know, you could spend hours just trying little things and comparing them. And I know that's all happened and so you don't see that as part of the end process. There's a couple of stars in there that are circular instead of crosshatches. I would leave just one circular because to me, that would mean Pluto. And we can kind of draw that out. That's my only real suggestion, you know, in terms of why we did this in the first place, why I brought this forward as a fair. I mostly saw it as a practical problem that needed solving in terms of scalability. And, excuse me, just, you know, a bit of an update for a new century. So I really appreciate how this whole process has gone. It was very important to all of us, I think, that it wasn't going to cost a lot of money. And I think we have achieved that objective. I hope that is part of the messaging that continues to get out there about this as people, you know, embrace a little bit of a change, whether they like it or not. I do hope this moves forward. I'm just really, really pleased with everybody who's been involved with the whole process. I liked the, I was really excited when I got my first look at those three initial logo ideas. I thought they were, they were all just killer and I knew right then that, you know, this wasn't going to be a bumpy road. It was, it was all about a universe of great possibilities. So thank you all. Thank you to the students. Thank you to NEU. Thank you to city staff and you especially, Chris. Thank you Mayor and to this council and to the previous council for all the inspirational, enthusiastic work that went into this.
Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you Mayor. I too appreciate all the time and collaboration and talent that went into this. Just very impressive in the designs and the different approaches coming in to this. Chris, thank you for just taking the torch on this one and pulling together a great team and great efforts. I still just kind of struggle with, you know, and Chris really highlighted it, no one even knew or sees the seal. And it is important historically, I think, and just to keep, to focus on Flagstaff that we, you know, I'm disappointed that there's not the flag in the logo. We've blended the two and assumed there was one design, but not, nobody sees the seal and not to have the flag in a Flagstaff logo is a little disappointing. I'd like to see it added. And I do appreciate that all of this work has been voluntary and that's important because we have so many big issues that we're facing and working on. And I don't think our citizens would appreciate us getting distracted from that. Having said that, there's still a cost if we do adopt a new logo. And I don't know, Chris, if you have made any estimates. I know there's letterhead and envelopes and flags and wraps on vehicles and stuff. Is there a projected cost or a plan? Does it just phase in as things get replaced? What is the thought on that or have we thought that far in advance?
Yes, thank you Councilmember Matthews. So the point of phases and as they need replacement is that it really would not cost significantly more. I don't have an exact number and I think you're probably correct that it's not exactly $0.00, but it, I can tell you confidently that it would be a very, very small number. And even things like letterhead, we will continue to use our existing letterhead until we run out of it. We'll use business cards till we're out of them. We'll use all those things and just when we send for new ones, we'll include a new image. And that would really be about the entirety of the public, of the cost implement. We don't currently have a city flag that flies outside of City Hall or anything, so I don't think we would need to replace that. I think there's two versions. I think there's one there and there's one upstairs. And so I don't know, that might be a couple hundred bucks or something to get those redone, but that's about all I can say. And then I also wanted to address that with this process, we want city staff and everyone else to feel comfortable using the city seal as well. So anyone that has it in their email, we're not going to tell them that they have to kick it out of their email or anything. So I think that you would still see a new version of the seal around the community. I think that part of the reason we don't see it now is that it's not particularly worth showing off. But in any case, I hope that answered your question and I'm happy to address it if it did not.
Thank you Chris. Yes, it did. So I'm just kind of on the fence about it. Again, I think that it's, the big thing that sticks out for me is just not having the flag there. Maybe if we looked at changing our name too and took out Flagstaff, that might work. But I'm not convinced that we need to change the logo. I don't want to discount it, you know, totally because there's been so much time and effort and talent and just heart put into this. But I'm just, I'm still not sure how I feel about this logo change because it's missing some of the elements that I think are important. And we did have a very youthful, forward-thinking group looking at it. And I don't want to discount or not consider the community as a whole, how they feel about, I know change is hard for a lot of people, but I think they, you know, we also need to be conscientious of that. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you Madam Mayor. I've been sitting here throughout the meeting, hearing everybody speak so positively about this. And I'm really kind of at a loss for words. I'm trying to construct something that's not critical and that's beneficial to this conversation. Because I think I have probably a little bit of an uneven playing field when it comes to this logo. Because as kids, our goal was to figure out where this place was. And we traveled all over this place looking for this exact spot. And we identified the dairies, old Zanzukey property, probably there. But we also identified northwest of Flagstaff, almost, well, it's an identical location to being this exact spot too. And then there's a place behind the mountain that is very, very suspiciously close to this. And then there's a spot out near, not Asher's Lake, but in that area, that is also very suspiciously close to this. In other words, what I'm saying is this is Flagstaff. This, in my best estimation, could be found on a computer screen somewhere. Not Flagstaff. The computer image or something. That being said, I want to say things that are constructive about this process. And it's not because I don't agree with the artwork. I think it's logo-y in its own capacity. And I think it was done well. You know, it's a great class project. I identify that for sure. But when it comes to the seal, and I was wondering if you could pull that slide back up for me? Chris, also, your team has done amazing work and you guys have done your job for sure. Has nothing to do with your guys' skill level.
Just this version?
Yeah, yeah. So when I see the elk, to me, he looks pretty dejected. He looks somber, like he's, he looks like I'm going to be feeling walking away from this meeting. And I would like the elk to not look so depressed, so sad, with his shoulders kind of hung and his head like walking away, like, here we go. Unless somehow it presents differently on a seal, which it could. I would, I would like to see that change happen. Besides that, the flag is cool that it's out there since we are Flagstaff. I appreciate that. I'd like to see that in more of the design, but I could see why you wouldn't want it here because this isn't Flagstaff. It's a design logo thingy that you could find on a computer screen. So we can't, we shouldn't put it there and I'm fine with the community's input, but what I'm afraid of is that we didn't give enough choices. You know, we talked about conserving time, we talked about conserving money. This is probably the right location to do that, so I support that. But at the same time, is how much is that going to cost us in identity, in future identity? Because to me, this is anywhere USA with a tree and a mountain somewhere, a lot of the coast, a lot of the Rocky Mountains. I mean, it could be anywhere. This could probably be anywhere too, but we found the spots where it's actually Flagstaff. The, the, I was curious about a hybrid. I'm sure you guys already been asked about that because I do like elements of this design. I do like elements of that design and that includes the coloration. I'm more partial to the blue, but I could see where the green would work. So these are just comments off the top. I really appreciate the design team's efforts on both behalves. But at the same time, the stars, I wasn't sure if it was a representation of snow, stars, or planets. And maybe that was the way it was supposed to be. But if those are where we're going to use our creative elements, like, I feel like there could be other places we could use them as well when it comes to this design to make it more Flagstaff. Because that's who we are, that's where we're at. So not to knock the work, Councilmember Aslan, I understand why you brought this forward. I'm cool with that. I'm cool with the conversation. I'm just going to be the odd man out on this one who does not want to change any of this. Because when I looked, I spent a while, I don't know if you guys noticed, I spent a while staring at this and how convoluted that was. And probably from the professor's perspective, that's why we're changing it is because it's so odd. Honestly, when I look at this and I put it against this and I put it against that, I'm like, I'll take, I'll take any of them in this context, but it's not always represented in this context. That would stand up just fine here to this, to me, any day. But in this context, in that context, it doesn't, it doesn't in my eyes represent Flagstaff. But I will be supportive of however the council wishes to vote on this. I mean, I won't be supportive necessarily, but I am supportive of the process and I'm supportive of all your work. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I wanted to add a couple of comments. Mayor, I believe you sat in on a couple of the group meetings and Heidi and Ally and I just wanted to thank you all for that. And Chris, I'm wondering, was there discussion of adding the flag to logo one?
I can't say that there was a discussion about the logo. We talked about it a lot in the context of the seal. The working group seemed pretty united in their recommendations on this. And I also want to say that the working group is kind of the ones that made the decisions on what direction to give to our student designers here. So we heard a lot about how they... So, we heard a lot about how the flag was important to the people of the city and they didn't want it to go away. And we, so we kept it, the working group kept it in its recommendations for the seal, but I don't believe that there was any discussion about it being added to a logo. I don't believe any designs came forward with it in it. And I don't think that the working group at any point asked for or requested that it be added for any of those reasons.
Thank you. And, you know, I do struggle because, Councilmember Garcia, I, from the beginning, have said how much I like our current logo. So, if that's the desire of council to keep it, I'm good with that. If we want to update and change it, I'm also good with that. I feel like I'm kind of on the teeter totter of, because this does say Flagstaff to me. And this doesn't necessarily, but this also is kind of an older rendition. And it would be great if we could combine the two. I don't know if that would be feasible in a application of this. But I appreciate your comments, actually. So, thank you.
Before, we have some public comment. And before I take that, I just want to say, this is yet another reason why I'm so grateful to have NAU in this community. And I hope that this process was meaningful for all of you. I mean, what a great thing to have in your portfolio, right? When you go out to find a job. I just, I think this is outstanding work. So, thank you so much. I very much like the cleaned-up seal. I've never been a huge fan of the, of this, just because it's so busy. And I, you know, when I look at this, I actually do see Flagstaff. Because I see the indigenous marks, I see the peaks, which is Flagstaff for all of us, the trees, and I just see a much cleaner presentation of Flagstaff. I hear the concerns about the flag and, I mean, maybe some additional, we can talk about additional ways to incorporate this into, into whatever we do. And I'm also, I just want to make sure, because it looks like on this screen and here, this is like a cream background. Okay. Because on this screen, it looked white. But I love both of these. And I don't, if you said this, I missed it, what, which one was the 75% winner?
It was an earlier variation of the green one. So, if you saw those three images that we had in the presentation, the one that was a slightly darker green, but a green and white only color. It was, it's, well, it's, the version in front of you is the next, next version of that one that we incorporated more of those public comments into.
And I'm wondering what, so this is just for discussion today. What are the next steps after, after tonight?
So, and thank you, Mayor, for the question. So, the steps are that today is meant to be the conversation. And our hope is that at the end of this, we get a definitive direction from council on what you would like to happen. And if that is adopting a new logo and making one of these versions as the seal, we would bring that back to you as an ordinance change, probably next month, with the hopes of having that approved before the semester ends and these students who have graduated and move on to better things and that kind of, that kind of thing. So, our ask of you today is to give us direction of, if you'd like to make a change of our city logo, which one you'd like us to change it to. And then, I believe we may be able to incorporate some small amounts of feedback or changes, as long as it can be done in that time period. Would be welcome to incorporate any feedback if you have it.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, would you mind if I took public comment and be thanking council? What we want our, what we want our direction to be. Charity Lee.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Charity Lee and I'm speaking on myself. I'm a citizen of Flag, resident, excuse me, resident of Flagstaff. And I grew up in Flagstaff. So, I really hit it home with me when Councilmember Garcia was talking. Because when I was looking at the logo and the seal, I was confused, honestly, because I do, I look at the seal and that's Flagstaff. And everything he was saying is exactly how it is when you grow up here, because you hear the stories about how Flagstaff got its name. And you do, you try to find this place. And when I look at that, it's beautiful. It represents the peaks. It represents the valleys. It represents the entire Flagstaff community. And no offense, I mean, I know y'all worked really hard. And I agree, you did a lot of hard work. But I don't think we should change what is already a good thing. And so I would encourage you to keep the logo. If you were to change anything, maybe you're fresh in it, you know, as is. But don't change it. And one of the things with the logo, I don't think it really represents the mountains. I don't think the mountains are really represented in that logo or the seal on how they really look. And so, that's just my two cents. Thanks.
Thank you. Chris, I'm wondering whether there was any plan to take this out to other organizations or? And first of all, let's all acknowledge that designing a logo by having everyone in a city design a logo is impossible. So, let's just get that out there. But I'm wondering whether you were going to consult with any other groups?
Do you mean solicit feedback specifically from other organizations in our community? Is that the question? That was never a part of our plan. Our hope was that our working group, which was again, driving kind of the decision-making behind this, and itself brings a unique and diverse set of backgrounds, would be representative of our city. And then, with that and a deliberate, or two deliberate public comment, or two public outreach processes, our hope was that we could distill all of that. But going to individual groups one by one was, in the nature of, or in the desire to not expend city resources too much over this, we tried to create a process that was both efficient and representative. And so, yes, that was not anything that we did deliberately or planned to do deliberately, no.
And the feedback that you received from the public, did the public indicate that they would like to see a change?
We saw a lot of different comments on that. There were some that said they don't want to change. And I'm not going to tell you that there weren't. Most of our feedback was positive throughout the process, especially once we showed the designs and were able to explain that we wanted this existing mark to live on as a seal and an important and official city emblem. I don't have exact numbers off the, I could guess off the top of my head, but I don't want to do that. I think most of the comments were positive and were pursuant to the designs. And there were some that were, you know, negative, don't do the project, but they were, they were in the majority, or the minority. I can tell you that definitively.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I guess my question, can we, so I like the seal, but I like it because it reminds me of the logo, the current logo. So, can we simplify the current logo and kind of do a mesh between the current logo and the seal? And simplify it and just bring that back as another option so that we have, we have another option to look at that is more reminiscent on this?
No, not with the timeline we're working on right now with the semester.
Can, can we push this into another semester?
Yeah, I believe that at least four or five of these students graduate this year and will not be with the project. So, to the extent that that were possible, which we've not explored, I don't want to state anything on this group's behalf or their future intentions without consulting them beforehand. It would have to be, it would be a very different process with different people involved. So, not with the current design team.
Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Councilmember Garcia. You know, I like the green logo, but it doesn't speak Flagstaff to me. And I was, and I don't think, and we've kind of talked about it, no one even knew about the seal. So, I don't want that design to go away. I totally get the importance for the current design team to, you know, take it all the way to the end. But this is a very critical decision. So, although I, you know, respect their work in this, I don't feel compelled to be pressured to make a decision just so they can, they can have the final stamp on it. I was thinking on the seal, cleaning it up like we just saw on the screen, maybe just adding the stars and the four corners and the inner circle on the green one and call it a day. I think the elk is very representative of Flagstaff. You know, I don't know that we need to put a happy face on him, but I think that the elk is another symbol of Flagstaff. And just maybe adding the stars to the background and the inner circle that was on the green would combine the best of both worlds. Other than that, I'm not, we can't do that. I'm just not in favor of changing it. I don't, I don't feel that this is, these logos really make me think of Flagstaff. And maybe just because I'm used to the old logos, obviously, but we're missing some elements. The flag, the elk, a cleaner design on the mountains. So, I would not be in favor of moving forward unless we can talk about maybe adding a couple of elements to the seal. And just having one design, not two totally separate looks, because I think that could get confusing. If someone said, you know, let's, is that the seal or is that the logo? When they see something, it may get a little confusing. And clearly, we don't use the seal very much because of maybe that reason. So, that's my input.
Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sorry about that. I was, I don't know what I was thinking. I want to ask you, Councilmember Aslan. So, this is, you know, I've had a lot of time spending, I spent a lot of my time in the last few years watching council meetings, but this is one that I just haven't, I don't know any history about. So, could you succinctly and briefly mention like what your goal is by bringing this up? Besides like the obvious facts that like things could, should be more homogenized and whatnot?
Mayor? Yeah, thank you for the question. I think I was next in the queue to speak anyway, so I'll kind of meld my thoughts together because I think what I was going to say kind of addresses this. So, originally, this idea of, yeah, please sit down, everybody. You've done all sorts of hard work already. You don't need to be standing there for an hour. This was brought to me by constituents as a concern that the logo needed to be cleaned up. And frankly, I agreed. You know, I have a certain level of background in graphic design. I'm not a professional artist and I don't want to overstate my credentials there. But I do think I share a graphic designer's sensibility. And logos all across the country, especially corporate ones, have been paring down over the past several decades. It's very much a trend. And I think part of that is expense. I think it's a lot cheaper for, you know, Taco Bell to just be purple all throughout, you know, their franchise. And to sort of make that design simpler. So, that's really where it came from. I, I, I'm certainly not recommending that we whitewash this wall over here. I think this is a fantastic piece of art and it's a part of our culture and our history. And so, there's that. And then, so, the, what I wanted to say is that, you know, I think here we are, starting to see just how complicated this process could get as ideas just get bounced back and forth in sort of a circular argument. I want to be very clear. I'm very comfortable with, with taking Logo One here and moving forward with that. And then using the Seal Concept Two as the seal. I really like that we have a seal as well as a logo so that we can kind of hedge that, that debate a little bit. And I agree with Chris's logic that we can use the seal a lot more now because we have something that's functional and that we're, that, you know, that we're going to pull out of the drawer and dust it off and use it. I will say, you know, I would be interested, if everyone else is more copacetic with this, of maybe just using Seal Concept Two as a logo. I think, you know, that kind of gets us to the place where we've had something that's just unwieldy and unmanageable and we've cleaned it up. You know, there'd have to be a couple other considerations to take into account. I think the working group and the students could take care of that fairly quickly. I don't know if that's part of the process that's already been heavily discussed and rejected for some reason. So, maybe Heidi can speak to that. That's not my preference, but that would be my spirit of compromise talking in me. I have some strong thoughts about, you know, the details on both of these, but I'm stepping back from that. I don't think, I think we need to recognize that it's not our role to be the artists here. We've commissioned that out and we have to, you know, we have to live with what we get, just like we have to live with the music that, what's his name, came up with for Dune, you know? It was, it was his commission. It was, anybody know the? Zimmer, thank you. I knew someone in the audience would know that. Anyway, I'm getting a little further afield. I'm also, I'm very curious to hear what Dr. Spence thinks of this. And I know that Councilmember House is not with us today. I think she has some fairly critical insights into all this too. She's been a part of the process all the way through.
Councilmember Spence, did you want to weigh in?
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to thank all the hard work that's been put into this design work. And I too am very appreciative of NAU's involvement in this. I would favor keeping the flag and the Flagstaff in our design. And throughout this conversation, I've been looking at our painting at the back of the chamber here. And I see that the tree that supports the flag, you can see the branches that have been trimmed off that tree trunk. And I think we, if it's possible, to include that little tiny detail in the pole or staff that holds up the flag in Seal Concept Two would be a nice addition artistically. I don't know if you could put that detail in there. But we all, we all know the legend that a tree was selected and the branches were cut off and the flag was raised on that tree trunk that was still, you know, planted in the ground. I favor keeping the elk in our seal. And I'm ambivalent as to whether we need a logo separate from the seal. But I would like to see the elk remain and I'd like to see the flag on a staff included in our design. But I'm willing to go with whatever the majority wants on this.
Heidi, did you have something to add?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers Heidi and
Mayor Vice Mayor, Councilmembers Heidi Hansen, EK, I'm Vitalia Director. I wanted to let you know, the reason this logo went into special projects with Chris Rhodey was because at the time that we were discussing this, Discover Flagstaff was not able to take this project on. And so what I actually liked about that was the fact that our previous Councilmember Harris brought up the idea of using the NAU students, and it's because the county and some other organizations have had success. I think that there's so much going on right now that we probably should table this idea. And if we want to bring it back, what I've been hearing from the student organization is they're not going to be able to do this for us. They've spent a semester working on this. I got to come in at the tail end and give some thoughts to what was happening, but I'm even hearing that some of our city staff would like a little bit more interaction on this idea as well. So I guess what I like to say is, I was in the communications building at NAU a long, long time ago, and we did projects like this as well. And projects like this take a lot of time and effort from the students, but I will say, it's, it's not for naught because they're going to be able to take this and show that the progress that they did as a team to collaborate, to take ideas from different focus groups and to come up with something. Doesn't mean it's a fail when we've decided we still need to spend a little bit more time on this. So I hope the students and the professor know that because I, too, have been part of something like this before. So I hope that we can all give them a great recommendation of the effort that they have put forward. Moving forward, why don't we table this for now, if you don't mind? If you'd like to bring it back, we could talk to Discover Flagstaff about doing the tweaks and the things that you're thinking of. But again, we would have to get on the production schedule and we would have to kind of start over. But I, I think that's okay. Nothing has to be done quickly. But again, I would like to just give a big round of applause to this NAU student group and to Chris because this is a really great learning experience and one that I, too, have actually been part of when I went to NAU so many years ago. So if you would like to do that, that's an option. I promise, if you'd like to bring it back later, I could get our city team involved. It's, it's a better opportunity for them to get involved now than it was when this was originally brought up.
Thank you, Heidi. And your class designed the Coconino County logo, is that correct? Council, how does, I'm sorry?
There's been 100 other ones.
And 100 other logos?
I'm exaggerating. Close to it.
97 other logos. So Council, what are your thoughts on what Heidi just proposed? Councilmember Aslan?
Yeah, I think we're almost there. I think a lot of work has gone into this. I think this, the sentiment that, you know, an update is appropriate is out there. I think what we're hearing, the consensus is, we want to keep it closer to what we originally had. I, I think we're almost there. I, I would agree with, with, if, if, if we're going to vote on this and it's just going to go down, I would rather table it and see a little bit more work go into it. And hopefully, we can have these students back on their own time in the future to celebrate a win here with this.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. Mayor and Council, obviously, we're in a work session tonight. There wouldn't be a vote either way. If you wanted it to come back later, it would just, you would just say essentially, "Staff, bring this back to us at some point in the future." But there wouldn't be any motion second or vote tonight.
Thank you, City Attorney. You know, but is that the direction that you'd like to go is?
I would like to table it and maybe possibly in the future have this come back. I mean, I have said I love our current logo, so I'm content.
Chris, did you want to add something?
Yeah, I just want to make one, one thing very clear. If it comes back in the future with work from Heidi's great team at Discover Flagstaff, that would be starting from scratch. We would not be able to use this or any of the concepts from the design team because we're not a part of it anymore, and it would not be ethical to continue using their work. So if it comes back, which is completely fine, and it would, it would be a new project with none of these existing elements that they came up with. Just want to make sure that that is understood.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, if I was going to say today we should make a decision, I would, I would definitely stick with the seal option. If, if nothing else, I think we should do the seal, redo the seal in this way. Why not? We got a seal right here. We got one that is not, in, in, not inaudible, but, you know, hard to read to begin with. What's, what's the hurt in at least keeping the seal design? So that way, you know, that's a feather in your cap if you're a student, at least. Also, I wanted to talk a little bit more about the great work that the students did on this one because I do like all of the design elements. I think that maybe the struggle here is with me personally. Maybe this is a growing experience that I need to take upon myself to let go of some of the old. But we, as local residents, have been letting go for so long of just one more thing, just one more thing that we got to capitulate to. And this might be the one that breaks all of us in that that's the last thing that we remember of Flagstaff being Flagstaff. So now let's just do whatever and move on with whatever the new town is going to be. And maybe that's the way I need to be. So understand that this challenge is within myself that I'm struggling with. It has nothing to do with your design, and I think your design is awesome. So I would like to keep the original seal, or the original, the original logo, and I'd like to move this seal to be the new seal.
Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. I just put part of it in chat, in the chat. The more I think about it, and, and Councilmember Spence reminded me of just how rich that history of our name is and how important the flag, and the flagpole is. It's, it's unfortunate just to find out that, I wasn't aware that we had this timeline that we had to go through this process and see the design and be pressured to make a decision or we lose all the work and effort. That was unfortunate. Had we known that, maybe we wouldn't have gone down that path to, to have such a tight timeline because this is a big decision. This is a big change for the city and not that, it's not time for us to freshen our look. It's not something we should be rushed into. So I'm going to suggest we do table it and like we've had to do on other discussions and bring it up again now that we have more information about the timeline and, and other people's preferences. And I think it is important that we bring the city employees who are the ones who look and use this logo all the time and really get some robust discussion from them. That's all I have to say.
And Patricia, your class has been working on this for two semesters, right?
Correct.
So last semester, and this is just for everyone's information to know what the process looked like. Can you describe what last semester was?
So students choose projects to work with, and these students chose to work on this project. So they continued to work as an undergraduate research class so that they could, instead of changing, usually when a client continues after we create a brand and we continue work with them, I, I have the class again with new students and they are passed on the design. But the students were very attached to this project and really wanted to continue and finish it. And so I created this undergraduate research group to continue the project without affecting the deadlines and anything like that. But if you don't mind, I wanted to, to mention just a couple of little things.
Please do.
One of the things that we saw when we were doing the audit for the existing logo is how it's used next to other logos in this community, mainly the NAU logo and Coconino County. In banners, in signage, you cannot see the Flagstaff logo. It's kind of disappears within everything else. And the reason is that it has to be reduced so small to be the same weight as the other logos that you can't read the text anymore and you can't see the beautiful details of this image that you see there. And, and once again, we were asked to create something. It was not the class that came and asked to do a project for you or for the City of Flagstaff. And simplifying the logo was also the reason to create more, make it more memorable and to stand within other logos of this community. And this comes back to my mind when, when the idea of keeping the seal as the logo is discussed. And so I'd like you to think about that. And, and even on the website, the way that it's used, it's reduced to a very small symbol and then you have to repeat the word City of Flagstaff because you cannot read City of Flagstaff within that emblem. So it's, it's a beautiful image. It is Flagstaff. The equity, emotional equity is something that is created with time. It is not something that you create immediately. So when you look at a logo, you don't have an emotional connection to it at all. And that's why the, the feedback on it looking like a TV, as a computer screen, it's because there's no attachment to it. There's no emotional attachment. Once you start using it, then you place it within the city and then you start having that emotional connection. So those are just the only things that I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Unless you have any questions or any comments for me.
Councilmember Garcia.
Is this what you're talking about as far as the seal not really popping out to you or whatever?
So unfortunately, we don't, we don't have a logo that is always represented this big and this clear. It has many uses in a business card, in a pin, or in a billboard, or within other logos, next to other logos. And so it's, I, I had a, a little Easter egg in the presentation, but Chris made me take it out because of course it's not the final logo. But I actually, in the thank you, I had put the new logo next to the Visual Design Lab and the NAU to show that it, you could see it. It, it had a weight to it. So this is kind of just to represent that. But I will say it, unless you have any other questions from your comments.
I had a follow-up. So, so your, your assessment of it standing next to other logos is it's, it's the size, but it's also that it's different?
It's intricate, too intricate for a logo. I would, I would say that it is an illustration, a beautiful illustration, not a logo.
I definitely agree with you. But when I look at this on my cell phone, I, I don't, I don't know. I don't have any problem seeing the detail or any of it. It looks really nice.
But you have to repeat the word City of Flagstaff next to it.
I see that also here.
But it's taken out of the, the emblem is, can exist as a standalone and be legible.
I see it. I can see it with my eyes, and I have really bad eyes. I could put my glasses on, I could see it even better.
You know, I, I thank you for this opportunity, for working with the city. I really think it's a great experience for the students, and I acknowledge that, all the feedback, and I think that whatever it's decided, it's, of course, okay with me.
Thank you. And I, I just want to make sure that the students understand how appreciative we are of you doing what was asked of you and creating these new marks and also cleaning up the seal. So the, I know from working with graphic designers that there's a certain amount of, you have to let go of some of your attachment to projects that you create. For me, that would be very difficult, and I'm not a graphic designer, so I don't have to practice it. But we are so grateful that you have spent two semesters of your NAU career working on these marks. And, and as I said before, I hope that it was a meaningful experience for you because, because this has been very meaningful to us, and we disagree all the time. So it is not specific to this discussion. And we, I, I was told that we would like to take a short break and, and get photos together with you all, if you would like that. Okay, let's come down to the end of the dais.
Wonderful presentation. Do you want me to? Let's take a, take a ten minute break.
Okay.
So are we ready to get started? Thank you all. We are down to item number 10 and we have a presentation and a discussion and I have several speaker cards.
Thank you so much, Tiffany Antal, zoning code manager. Thank you so much for your time tonight. Here to talk about just sort of the first steps with a middle housing zoning code text amendment. This is a necessity based off of House Bill 2721 that requires us to allow for the construction of duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, and townhomes as a permitted use on all lots owned for single-family residential use in limited areas. And that's going to be the big topic of what we're going to talk about tonight, is what areas we would like to apply this code amendment to. But, so you can see here that those areas include one mile of the municipality central business district. We don't officially have a central business district actually established. So if we would like to go about this, we will need to create one. I have mocked one for you tonight in a presentation. Also, we need to apply this code to at least 20% of any new development of more than 10 contiguous acres. And if you can figure out how to do this, you let me know. All right. So with all of that being said, I have the wrong text amendment pulled up, or the wrong presentation pulled up. So let me start over.
You're good.
Apparently, I come too often to, to this location and do presentations. So let's open the right one. Much better, much better. All right, here we go. So that duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, and townhomes. So I do want to talk about what, what is a townhome? Under our zoning code, we call that single-family attached. That's what's meant by townhome. So what that means is it's a single-family home that is on its own individual lot, but it shares one or more common or budding walls with another dwelling. So it's attached. They can be attached in a very long row, but they are on their own individual lots and are sold as the same as any other home. All right, let's talk about a duplex. So a duplex is when you have attached dwelling units, but they're on the same parcel of land. So those two units are on the same parcel. They are not sold separately. They could be through other means, but I won't complicate it. The, this particular duplex is showing you a side-to-side duplex, but duplexes also are front-to-back, meaning one unit's in the front of the building, one's in the back, and then also on top of one another. Triplexes and fourplexes, really not a lot of difference here from a, from a duplex. Now you've, you're talking about three units, three units in the same building on the same parcel. And a fourplex is four units on the same, in the same building on the same parcel of land. So one of the things that I want to talk about really quickly, this is just sort of like a deep dive understanding of our zoning code, is middle housing is talking about housing types. So the code utilizes housing types and we also utilize land use. So when you look at housing type, that's really that building form, whether it's a single-family detached, a single-family attached, which is a townhouse, duplex, triplex, fourplex, or multifamily dwelling. When you look at the zoning code and the permitted uses, you're looking at a land use. And that land use is really referencing the quantity of units that are really in that building or the quantity that you're going to get per lot. So in this case, when we talk about single-family detached as a land use, it means one home per parcel. Single-family attached is one home per parcel. Duplex and so on goes on. For us, multifamily right now, we don't have a land use listed as triplex and, and fourplex. And the reason why we don't have a land use is because we just qualify them as multifamily. I will, depending upon what route we have to go, I will have to untangle this little mess because we will need to create a new land use of triplex and fourplex and will somehow have to detangle that from the definition of multifamily currently. So I just wanted to show just a really quick example of this. You have a single-family land use. This is a single-family home on one lot. Over here, you have the single-family housing type where you have lots of single-family homes on the same parcel of land. So it's actually multifamily development. So hopefully that's clear as all can be as we talk about this because I think it's really easy to confuse building form with permitted land use. So of all of these building forms that we're talking about, you can achieve them in one way or another under our zoning code in various different zoning ordinances. But the land use section of our code is what really we'll need to change. Oops. There's a blank slide. So I want to talk about the zoning districts and what we already allow in those zoning districts and the ones that are most likely going to be impacted by this upcoming text amendment. Our resident, rural residential and estate residential zones, for example, they already allow a duplex, they already allow a townhome, and they already allow for multifamily. Multifamily is only allowed in a certain form. So right now, technically, a triplex and a fourplex would not be allowed in the RR zone, even though multifamily is allowed. This particular House Bill does not require us to change our density standards either with each of the zoning districts. Right now, if you're looking at the RR and the ER, the density is one unit per parcel. So in order to have a fourplex, you would need to have four acres of land. So that's what this table is sort of breaking down for you, is each of the zoning districts that we would need to look at. For simplicity's sake, I stayed with the conventional code. I did not include the transect zones, which also will require to be updated in accordance with this law to make sure that wherever a single-family home is permitted, that we are also looking at triplex and fourplex. So with all of that information, just so you understand what it would take in order to still accommodate a fourplex, for example, in the single-family residential, you'd have to have more than a half an acre, for example, to right now do that. What I would mention is, is that we are working on the land availability suitability study and the code analysis project, which is looking at how we can better look at density across our zoning districts. And that is something we will be getting to here in the near future. Where we're still trying to figure out is what are we going to do with density in terms of incentives and what are we going to do with density in terms of density by right? But hopefully, as we have that density conversation with the CAP, it will also make more missing middle housing types available and truly developable in all of the different zoning So we talked about that central business district. We don't have one. We would need to define one. We can also have more than one. So I reached out to our economic vitality team and said, hey, you know, if we were going to create central business district, if we were going to go down this route, you know, we can create others. What would, what would you potentially consider? And it's areas of activity. So, you know, they suggested we would look at Aspen Sawmill, the Milton Corridor, the Fourth Street Corridor, the Mall and the Marketplace. When you start to look at all of those and the one-mile buffers that go around them, you're starting to see that we're taking on large areas of the city. We could also make our zoning code and our zoning map a lot more complicated by bubbling in certain properties and bubbling out others. I don't know why I keep doing that. I am accidentally adding those slides. It's just me because I didn't put it in presentation mode. So here I go. I'm doing great today, by the way. So I grabbed our central business zoning district just to give you a sense of what a one-mile buffer would look like outside of a potential central business district. So you can see that that one mile is going to pick up all the way up to Coconino Estates. It's going to take in the south side. It's going to take in the historic areas north of the downtown. It's going to take in Plaza Vieja. It will take in Townsite. It will take in Cherry Hill. It will go all the way up to McMillan Mesa. So it's a pretty big area that would be, and this is just grabbing the smallest possible area that could be our central business district. I did throw this in here initially, so this presentation's been given a couple of times. There had been a new bill introduced already that would allow us to work with historic properties or historic districts differently. However, this bill has already died. I am sort of lingering on to wait for the session to end, just to see if there's going to be any striker bills in regards to House Bill 2721 and to be any striker bills in regards to House Bill 2721 and, and middle housing, because I know different cities are trying to figure out how to implement this. And so there might be some clarifications that come along the way, but we wanted to get a head start. So if we need to define a central business district, there's going to be a lot of work in that, and we'll need to, to get going on that activity. So this is what it would have looked like, had we been able to exempt out historic districts within that one-mile buffer. So here's the, the fun thing is, is that we are required to make all zoning regulations uniform for each class or kind of building, or use of land throughout each zone. So in one zoning category, I can't say that a fourplex in this location is a conditional use permit, but over here, it's permitted by right. As long as it's the same zoning district, it's got to be treated the same way. So the only way to, to take specific areas is to add that overlay zone. Our resource protection overlay is a good example. Our historic districts are also, can be overlays as well. So you are just then applying another zoning layer on top of properties. That would be the tool that if we, if we stick to the statute itself and we do those specific areas, we will need to go in and create additional overlays. So how should the city move forward with this amendment? We have done this presentation as well with the Planning and Zoning Commission. We've been to the Heritage Preservation Commission, and we've also been to the Housing Commission. You know, we, the most impacted zoning districts are those that currently allow for single-family now, that don't already make it easier for triplexes and fourplexes. And those are the, the zones that I have up here, estate residential, rural residential, residential single-family, residential single-family neighborhood, multi, or manufactured home, and the community commercial zone. So if, the question tonight is, is do we want to potentially consider doing this citywide, so that everybody and all of these residential zones are treated sort of equally, and land uses are distributed, and they're not targeted towards, or in, in impact certain areas? What I can tell you is, is that along, in the land availability suitability and the code analysis project, there is a, a study done on vulnerable neighborhoods. And some of those neighborhoods that are distinguished as vulnerable would fall within those, if we limited those one-mile buffers. We also would be targeting primarily our historic districts as well. What I would tell you is, is that as I've been to each one of those commissions, they've all been so, so far supportive of going citywide. And I, that's great information. And so really, looking for that same information from you all tonight is, are we good at looking at, taking this amendment citywide and looking at it more holistically? There is a lot more work to be done. I know that there has been several public comments submitted. I, I attached some as well to the staff summary that came early, I think, way back at, when we were at the Planning and Zoning Commission. And some of those are just so hugely encouraging, and they also want to go far beyond. I mean, some of them include huge, big changes in the zoning code. And so, you know, definitely would be looking for feedback on how, do we want to sort of stay within the frameworks of the bill as it's, as it's prepared, and, and how far we really want to go? Because the hard part for staff at this point is to step much further into the density and lot reconfiguration conversation without overstepping sort of that code analysis process, which I think is really a great project, and is really going to help us inform and make really good decisions moving forward in terms of our carbon neutrality and housing goals. So with that, if you have any questions, sorry, I was a little bit of a mess.
That was not. That was excellent. I'm wondering whether the Heritage Preservation Commission had something specific related to, say, heritage preservation to, to add to this conversation, like what their views were?
Sure. I, I think they definitely understood about the vulnerability of different neighborhoods. For example, the R1N zone is a very special zone. It applies to most of our historic core neighborhoods. Townsite is the one, though, that has an additional layer of protection on it, where Plaza Vieja does not. And so they absolutely took that into consideration in terms of making one neighborhood more susceptible to redevelopment while maybe protecting another outright. Now, would the, would the Heritage Preservation Commission wish for us to say, they would like to say that most of those neighborhoods already have a large amount of missing middle housing types? They've, they've been the core of it all along, and they would like some consideration that they may not be the only neighborhood that includes middle housing types. And they would, they would like to keep that historic core working. And staff is willing to work with the commission and also try to finesse what parts of the code we can to help make those developments as they're allowed in their neighborhood, work with the existing parameters of their historic preservation guidelines.
And is there an overlay that would limit to, say, a duplex? And then elsewhere, it can be up to a fourplex? Or it has to be, in whatever district we decide, has to be uniform?
That's correct. Whatever district we decide has to be uniform. And if we limit that area to that one mile, just even the historic downtown, which we have to include for sure, it absolutely includes those historic neighborhoods, and mostly only those historic neighborhoods.
Okay, thanks. Counsel, questions, comments? Councilmember Spence?
Thank you, Mayor. Would it be helpful, as we try to answer this question this evening, would it be helpful and even possible to understand the Arizona Legislature's motive in passing this law? What, what were they trying to, to get cities to do by defining this one-mile radius, or one-mile radius and targeting downtown? What, what problem were they trying to solve?
Thank you for that question, Mayor and Counsel. I, I can't, I cannot specifically answer that question. We are seeing more and more push towards statutes, or towards new statutes, that are trying to reduce zoning standards to increase the amount of housing being developed. Middle housing types are one of those things that got left out in, in many zoning codes from the 80s on. So when you look at cities that developed under older parameters, middle housing types are very common. They're still common in Flagstaff and older subdivisions. I live near Upper Greenlaw, for example, which has a mix of duplexes and single families, and you'd never know. So, you know, the, and again, those were built in the 60s, and that was a development style that was much more acceptable and much more palatable. Then we went on that rush of only single families, and single family homes are great, detached, single-family homes are fantastic, and that's where everybody should live, and that's where most resources have been focused. And so I could only guess that the assumption is, is that if we go towards allowing more missing middle types, which are more compatible and more palatable in, in conjunction with single-family neighborhoods, that we have that potential to increase housing stock, especially within our existing developed areas. That would be my assumption.
Thank you. And I, I, I'm starting to interpret this as a rare instance where the Arizona Legislature is working in concert with us as a city to achieve our goals for more affordable housing. So I just want to revel in that moment.
Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have a quick question, and maybe, maybe a little bit of a comment. So the question is, I, in this mile parameter, I mean, I drove several miles with the city looking for these types of neighborhoods, and was surprised how many neighborhoods had everything, you know, already done. So I guess my first question is, would we be looking to, to just, I, I saw that in the staff report, that we wanted to see if we wanted to modify different, like, activity zones or, or central business districts, or whatever you call those, so that way we could have more of a reach? But how far do we have to go? Because some of the places I had to go to were like, I mean, even Continental has mixed housing in certain places. I mean, I mean, do we have to make a, you know, like, s, s, co, at, places outside of town central business districts, since that's where you see some of them? Can you help me figure that one out?
Sure. So the question tonight is, is let's forego, maybe that's not a question, maybe, let, we could forego the whole central business district and the 20% of new development, and we could just apply this to the, to the zoning code citywide. So if you're in the RR zone, it'll apply to everybody in the RR zone, or everybody in the R1N, or everybody in the R1 zone. Or we could go through that process of defining core areas where we would like to see this amendment remain in place. And that would just take a lot of work. That, those, those were just ideas that I threw out. They're not exact, is, nothing is an exact science, but we would need to work through each of those individually. And that'll take us some time, and we'll need to get it done by January 1st, 2026.
I appreciate that. And then the comment, and, and I, I don't know if, if this is the appropriate time for it or not, but when, our colleague, David, or Councilmember Spence, was mentioning that, you know, middle housing will bring more affordable housing, I'm sure it will. Like, I believe in, in, in the experts saying that that's going to happen. But, you know, when it's not happening, for instance, on my block, we recently got a, a three-plex, it's this gargantuan three-story house on Center Street. It's black, it's beautiful, it's amazing, it takes up the entire lot. Each of those places are renting for twice what I pay two houses up. That's going to change my rent eventually. And that's not affordable. It's making it less affordable. So I mean, if there's, there are, maybe, maybe I'm the microcosm, maybe I'm too small of a sample size to, to make that statement, but I think it's something that, if you're not living it, you might not recognize it, and I'm living it.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Aslan?
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Tiffany. If you touched on this, I'm sorry I missed it, but maybe I'll, I'll phrase it this way, so I'm not in trouble. Could you, could you philosophize a little bit about what, what the impact on short-term rentals is with all of this?
Sure. So we cannot regulate short-term rentals through, specifically through this. What I can tell you is, is that it is, I'm, I'm going to try to get this right. This is not my, I do not work in our short-term rental section of the city code as much as other folks do. But my understanding of state law is multifamily development does, is not able to be short-term rented. And so there is a little bit of work here to be done, because right now, units, buildings with three units or more for us are qualified as multifamily. So there's some work and some understanding of how maybe that statute would overlap with this statute, and if we can still come up with a land use that's called triplex and fourplex, and it still meets the requirements or definition of multifamily. But in terms of duplexes and single-family...
How's enforceability on that, too?
We've actually had a case that we've pursued in terms of enforcement. I mean, it wouldn't, the, what happened was the, the entity came forward and they applied for the city permit on every unit, and it came to our attention that an apartment complex was turning, it basically became a hotel, right? So we were able to work with that property owner and bring them in alignment. So there is actually a pretty good process in place that helps us catch it.
Okay. Sorry I interrupted you two.
Oh, no.
I, I think it's nice just to touch upon that a little bit, because I'm sure it's going to be in the public mind.
That's about the best we can do for short-term rentals.
All right, Counsel, I don't see any other Cs or Qs. Councilmember Spence?
Thank you, Mayor. Help me understand, are, is our action this evening exempting us from Prop 207 claims from people that might come forward and say, our, our zoning action is decreasing their property value? If we're hiding, if we're working behind the shield of this state statute, are we exempted from Prop 207?
I'm not an attorney, and so I'm not best to answer that question. But generally, the belief is that when we're giving additional rights to zoning code, we're less likely to be impacted by a Prop 207, as opposed to when we take rights away.
Spot on.
All right. I'm going to go ahead and take public comment. And Counsel, we will take additional questions and comments afterwards as well. First up, we have Tyler Denham.
Hi, my name is Tyler Denham. I'm speaking today as myself on a topic near and dear to my heart, as I actually live in a townhome, one of the types of missing middle housing under discussion today. The city has two options in front of it. The first is to do the bare minimum to comply with House Bill 2721. This won't result in much missing middle housing, as House Bill 2721 is a weak bill, and its percentage and location-based approach is cumbersome and may concentrate development in vulnerable neighborhoods. Alternatively, Flagstaff could pursue its own approach that legalizes and meaningfully encourages missing middle housing citywide. And there are many reasons to want to. Missing middle housing can help Flagstaff meet its sustainability and carbon neutrality goals. Because of their relatively small size, missing middle housing options tend to use less energy and have less embodied carbon in their construction. And missing middle housing promotes a compact development pattern that enables walkable neighborhoods and public transit, and that in turn reduces transportation-related carbon emissions. Missing middle housing can help Flagstaff meet its affordability goals. Again, as a function of its smaller size, missing middle is relatively obtainable. Data from Portland's 2022 code reform shows it costs up to a third less than detached single-family homes. And it helps neighborhoods accommodate a wider range of household sizes, ages, and income levels. Missing middle is also more likely to be built by the community itself, unlike large-scale developments that are dominated by outside investors. It provides an avenue for local developers and residents to invest in our city. And finally, missing middle housing accomplishes this while minimizing concerns about abrupt neighborhood change that larger-scale developments create. For proof, you know, walk around Flagstaff's oldest neighborhoods, the ones built before missing middle became missing. And you'll find duplexes, triplexes, cottage courts, and townhomes on every block, much of it indistinguishable from any other home at the street level. All that to say, I encourage you to take the latter option and direct staff to draft a text amendment that legalizes and meaningfully encourages missing middle housing citywide. And being optimistic, I think we should aim to make ourselves a national best model for missing middle housing. We have amazing housing sustainability and planning staff. We have examples from cities like Portland, Spokane, and Flagstaff's own past to draw from. It's entirely within our reach, and it wouldn't be the first time. Look at what Flagstaff did to pioneer the concept of a dark-skies city, something for which we've received national and international acclaim, and inspired over 200 other localities. Just because we're a small city doesn't mean we can't have a big impact. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Tyler. Jean Christie?
Thank you for your service to our town. And I just want to, Tyler did such a good job of speaking intelligently, so I'll speak emotionally to you. I hear, what I understand, is a move to protect our historic downtown area, and I'm much in favor of that. Last time I spoke, I said, my family's been here since 1886. And I think part of what attracts people to visit is our cozy, beautiful, lined streets and et cetera. I'm concerned, because some of the things I've heard about these building of duplexes and fourplexes on existing lots, where the setbacks have been reduced to five feet and not including parking on the property, that there would be street parking, which in a town... a town that has snow, unless we're going back to, um, front loaders and dump trucks taking the snow to Lake Mary is not very responsible. I'm concerned about not having, um, green space. Um, families would be the type of things that live there. And I, as a parent, would not like to tell my children to take their dishes to the sink and go play in the street. I think, um, you need to plan green space or property close by for children to play. People are always going to have cars. They come here so that they can drive, uh, into the woods and hike. Even the bicyclers come in hordes to Campbell Mesa nearby where I live, park their cars and take their bike off the end, and then they bike. So people are always going to have cars, and we need to be realistic about that. Any, um, higher density on Fort Valley Road is unthinkable until the city and the state, devise a plan to improve traffic flow on that. During the heavy seasons, depending on whether it's morning traffic or afternoon traffic and snowball, maybe one car can turn left at Cheshire, and that's with a light. So that situation, and I have ideas on that, too. Also rental income. Council said that one-third of your salary is considered affordable, uh, and that works okay for the first or two years, until you sign a new lease and they raise your rent $200 a month. Salaries don't go up like that, but again, I come to stories of people I know. These things are happening, and the city, uh, needs to consider these and consider solutions. And I have some ideas on that, too. Thank you for your time, and again, I appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Question?
Um, Councilmember Aslan, Jean, pardon me, um, Councilmember Aslan has a question.
Uh, Jean, yeah, I, actually, I'm wondering if you could just briefly encapsulate some of the ideas you were hoping to share.
Um, let's see. Well, as far as the first ideas on, um, affordable rent housing, I think, a- and the whole concept of what we're not allowed to, um, touch with these, um, what are those homes that people come and live in? See, you talk to me, and I can't remember the words. But, um, Airbnbs, that's what I was thinking. Um, I think that, that, uh, our city and places like Sedona, who are already, uh, it's almost basically ruined by Airbnbs, we should be able to go to the state and combine with other cities and say, "Look, this might be great for sprawling cities that have, but for the, our cities that are landlocked, you know, it's a complete different issue," you know? So I think that we need to work together, and I know where it's, it's an uphill battle, but I do think it's worth, um, making a distinction between cities that are landlocked by forest land or whatever and others. So that's one avenue that I think we could do. Okay, the other thing that I, when I spoke before, um, the city's good friend Walter said that he helped build, you know, get the apartment complexes on, um, McMillan Mesa and things like that. And I, I don't know that you realize how they, um, actually charge rent on these affordable housing units. It's kind of, uh, like a Russian roulette thing. My niece tried to get an apartment up there, it was great, she wanted to look at another place. First day she was in there on Monday, this is the rate they gave her, she came back on Tuesday and it was $200 higher. Why is that? Because they have this, oh, well, if NAU is here, well, we charge this rate. And if, if you come on Monday or Friday and people are moving out, and I think that some idea of rent control, um, needs to be considered, too. I don't know how that works, but I think these are options. New York City obviously does it downtown, we're not New York City, but, you know, we are a limited, uh, facility, and the idea of Airbnbs and things like that continually hounding people. I literally have friends who were in apartments for two years, and that third year, they raised their rent, and now they're homeless, right? I mean, they're looking for another affordable place. I don't know if we, um, consider encouraging, uh, long-term rentals at fixed rates, you know, encourage businesses to do that, so that the people that actually work here can, can live here and live here for more than a year. The city's good friend Walter also said that he, he supports Habitat for Humanity, as I do, too. But he, um, maybe forgot that their major tenant is the way out of poverty and being able to live sustainably is by homeownership. And so we have to be able to, you know, supply places for lower, even middle-income, lower income, to buy properties, so they're not continually priced out of the market. And, um, so those are some of my thoughts that I would put out on the table. And like I said, I'm not an expert of any of these areas, but maybe I can plant seeds for directions to move, so that, I've been here five generations, so that my kids can still live here, and my grandchildren, too. Any, any other questions I can not answer?
I think that was great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Charity Lee.
Council and Charity Lee, I'm speaking on behalf of Capstone Homes. I'm the entitlement manager for Capstone. So listening to, um, the presentation, very well done, by the way, Tiffany, um, I think it would be important to identify central business districts and also open it up for the entire city, but for new development. You have a lot of different developments that are established, and I think it would be, you really need to be thoughtful with implementing this, because it does have an impact for the entire city of Flagstaff. But one of the things that I like about this is it does open up more development, diversity in housing, and it helps to, um, meet the city's goals, as far as bringing more housing to Flagstaff. So that's what, um, we would propose, is to just be thoughtful in how you, um, implement this, designating central business districts, and then for the new development throughout the city of Flagstaff.
I have a quick question for you, Charity.
Sure.
So, um, if I'm understanding you correctly, you're saying that you're not in support of this applying to existing subdivisions?
Well, I know that if you identify a central business district, it, it's going to impact existing subdivisions, so I think you really need to be thoughtful in that. And where the central business district is defined, as Tiffany mentioned, it's high-use areas. So that makes sense, where you would have, um, diversity in housing as far as duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes. I don't know if it makes a lot of sense in areas where the majority are single-family residential. And then, let's say you have one vacant lot, and then all of a sudden you plop a three-plex there, or something like that. It just seems that it doesn't really have the flow of the subdivision. So that's where I think it makes sense to be more thoughtful in how you're, um, designating these areas. I do like it across all of the city of Flagstaff for new development. And that, you know, in that instance, through the planning process, you can be thoughtful on, on how you want to design that subdivision, and that makes sense to me. Especially because, you know, some of these, um, subdivisions are land, uh, parcels of land that might be zoned rural residential, um, you might have to go to a rezone if you wanted to do something like a fourplex or triplex. In this situation, you wouldn't necessarily have to, but you would have to meet the density requirements.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Taylor Surchick? Did I pronounce that correctly?
Hello, my name is Taylor Surchy, and I live in Sunnyside. And I support the approach of making it just citywide. Like, it does sound like it would be a lot of work, designating specific zones, figuring out the impact, or are we going to do multiple zones? Especially since the cap project is going on at the same time. It really seems like a waste of time, in my opinion, to focus on, you know, the exact impacts, rather than just, like, I don't really see a negative of doing it citywide. Because, yeah, it's like, okay, a triplex might go down in a single-family residential place, it's not the end of the world. You know, it still has to conform to all the other zoning requirements and coding requirements, so it's not like you can just, you know, instantly get like the Calhoun walled city in the middle of a neighborhood or something. I really think that missing middle housing would be really good for the entire city, too, because, again, I live in Sunnyside, and I think it's awesome that I can just walk to pretty much everything I need. I don't know if this is within the scope, but I think it would be awesome if we could go even a step further and introduce, like, mixing residential and commercial a lot more throughout the city, because, again, I feel that just makes sense. If you want to have a reduction in travel times, a reduction in carbon emissions of all kinds, like, it's nice to have a walkable city. And then it's nice to be able to just go around and talk to people on your day-to-day, like, actually have a community, rather than, you know, half the city's just stuck on Milton, you know, at the beginning and the end of every single day. Like, that's not really good community building. So, uh, again, citywide, definitely support that approach. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jill Stevenson.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Jill Stevenson, speaking for myself. I'm very happy to hear that you're talking about expanding middle housing. Um, I think that could definitely help alleviate the housing shortage and could certainly be much more land and energy efficient than all the single-family housing on their own half-acre or, you know, whatever space. I also think that middle housing could blend in easily in, pretty much into most existing neighborhoods. I mean, I really think people would accept it, knowing that it will help with the housing shortage. I would ask that in creating your codes, um, you include a variety of middle housing types, which might include cottage courts, courtyard buildings, um, maybe even sixplexes. I don't know. I think maybe standards for constructions, construction need to be simplified while you're keeping, uh, the carbon footprint in mind, and also the sitting, city coding requirements. I would hope that you use the same standards for public right-of-way improvements as are currently used for single-family homes and duplexes and triplexes. And I definitely agree that, um, green spaces should be incorporated, and I think we have to face the reality of having some kind of parking spaces, not relying on what can be parked in the road because of the, the winter snowplowing problem. But I definitely think we should be aiming towards walkability. This is just crucial. Okay, thank you very much, and I really appreciate all the time and effort you folks put into all these issues that you deal with. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have online commenters?
Yes, Mayor. Um, our first commenter is going to be Ace Overman. Ace, if you'd like to unmute, and you can offer your comments now.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, my name is Ace Overman, I'm speaking on behalf of myself. I would like to just start off by saying I am in support of the citywide option. There is strong evidence that legalizing middle housing in more or all neighborhoods increases the building of housing units, as long as zoning code amendments are thoughtfully written and address smaller lot sizes, lot splitting, and street parking management. Portland, Oregon, allowed more middle housing throughout the city and has accelerated development of more diverse and affordable housing options in Portland's single-deling residential neighborhoods. This recent change in states, this recent change in state statute here in Arizona feels like a great opportunity for the city of Flagstaff to effectively address the ongoing housing emergency here in the city. I feel that the city does not take this opportunity, which will allow for more housing, increased density, and ever-increasing sprawling city that is becoming heavily congested and expensive. The city will have to, unfortunately, probably make a turn to making a decision like the city of Sedona did last year. I know this policy's an alarm place, but they, the council voted on this, but to make a designated parking lot for city employees to sleep in their cars, because housing had become so expensive and inaccessible in Sedona. Currently, right now, the average home in the city of Flagstaff costs $700,000, and the median household income is $70,000. It is recommended that only one-third, uh, only 30% of your income goes to housing, so that means for a family to afford a home in Flagstaff today, the household needs to have an income of over $200,000, which is three times more than the median income here in Flagstaff. At this rate, more and more people will be priced out of Flagstaff, and soon, unfortunately, a majority of homes in Flagstaff will just become second homes or short-term rentals by investors from the valley and in California. When I think of the coolest homes and neighborhoods in Flagstaff, my mind immediately comes to Southside and Downtown, where there's a variety of different types of homes right next to one another, such as a duplex next to a triplex next to a single-family home, all with their own elaborate acro- architectural design. Increasing the middle, missing middle housing throughout the, throughout all neighborhoods will assist in driving down the price of homes here in Flagstaff. Missing middle homes will also provide an opportunity for young people and young families that perhaps people from the valley come here to NAU and then graduate and decide they want to stay here in Flagstaff to hopefully acquire edic- equity at a young age, like my generation's parents and their parents did before me. Increasing middle housing within every part of the city, even suburban neighborhoods, will give business to local small developers here in Flagstaff who are willing to make affordable housing and are in line with Flagstaff's regional plan. To ensure developers are building an adequate amount of middle housing, requirements should be increased to provide middle housing on more than 20% new-
Thank you, Ace. Your, your time is up. Thank you so much for your comments. And we have another online commenter?
Yes, we have one more. David Hayward, you can go ahead and unmute and offer your comments now.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person tonight. I wanted to touch on, uh, three things that I, I heard other people, um, say while we've been having this conversation. Um, firstly, firstly, Tiffany mentioned, you know, that in the public engagement they've had, that they've really heard, um, folks wanting to push even further than this in terms of, uh, increasing density options, uh, for, for our different zones. That's something we've seen through the regional plan process as well. Um, we, we just had a meeting this week, um, basically, where, where we've having, um, some of our larger developers come forward and saying, you know, "Look, we, we love your ideas about increasing density," and what they've heard from the community, and the worry was actually that they wouldn't even be able to provide as much as the community was asking for. So I think this is, you know, this is one of those issues where folks from across the spectrum are really agreeing that this is the, the direction we want to go in. You know, I'd also say to, um, Councilmember Spence's question about, um, kind of the, you know, the, um, the legislator's, um, motivation, um, I suppose also, I'm, I'm, I'm not daft enough to try and look into the mind of, of any politician, um, but, you know, uh, again, would say, you know, this is, you know, i- i- if, what we're seeing, you know, across the spectrum down there in the capital, we're seeing it across the country and as well across our, our community, um, that people are in favor of this. And I think that goes to my last point about, you know, following, following up on something that Tyler said, that, you know, those legislative actions, I, I think really, they're not necessarily ta- targeted right towards communities like Flagstaff, which are already leading the charge on, um, you know, providing, uh, a lot of this type of housing and moving, uh, zoning codes in that direction. Um, they are definitely more focused on communities that have a large number of, you know, new single-family subdivisions, or very wealthy communities that, you know, use, um, uh, use these types of codes to, you know, for social exclusion purposes, basically. So, um, all of that said, I, I strongly support making a, a citywide, um, change, uh, in the code, and having a level of simplicity, um, in regards to that, being able to do it anywhere across the city will really help. Like, folks said, those, those small, the smaller developers, um, you know, people like I was when I first started out, I mean, I did, I did, uh, you know, duplexes and things like that in New Orleans when I started, and, you know- New Orleans when I started, and, you know, it, it, it's a lot easier when those things are by right, and you're not having to hire a ton of experts to kind of help you navigate the zoning process. So thank you very much for hearing me tonight, and I hope to see this happen. Thanks.
Thank you. And that was it, correct?
Yes, Mayor.
All right. Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you Tiffany for the presentation and everyone who spoke on this topic tonight. Apologies that I can't be there in person. I am in DC right now, but definitely wanted to tune in for this conversation because I'm very excited. I'm excited about the opportunities that this bill creates because I think that at its heart, it's opening pathways to a more diverse housing supply, something we desperately need to meet the needs of our workforce, our families, our young professionals, and everyone who chooses to call Flagstaff home. That said, I believe that Flagstaff can and probably should do more than even this bill calls for. To nod to earlier comments from Tiffany, and Tiffany, please forgive me if I am paraphrasing this incorrectly, but this is really our chance to adopt zoning code amendments that truly reflect our city's landscape, network, neighborhoods, and values. That means enabling missing middle housing across our residential zones while also protecting the character of our historic neighborhoods through tailored overlays and design standards. It means pushing beyond the minimums in the bill to encourage higher percentages of middle, missing middle housing where we can in new developments, and embracing flexible options like those we've heard tonight in cottage courts, four, five, and even six-plexes and ADUs. I also want to suggest that we need to make sure that increasing the housing supply doesn't come at the cost of livability. As one speaker mentioned, access to green space really matters, especially in a community like Flagstaff. And I think that cottage courts are really a great model here. They are small homes that are built around shared gardens or open green spaces that promote connection and provide open space right outside your door. I want to support an approach that allows for citywide missing middle housing with context-sensitive guidance for infill, smart tools like floor area ratios, updated parking rules, and designs that keep Flagstaff livable, very walkable, and very sustainable. And finally, I'd like to ask about our capacity to track the progress of something like this, especially to track it publicly, because transparent reporting and regular updates will be critical as we're evaluating the impacts, making adjustments, and staying accountable to our housing goals and to our community. I'm encouraging us to be bold, but also encouraging us to be balanced. I'm hoping that as we consider adoption of some of what this bill makes possible, that we're able to lead in ways that reflect Flagstaff's character, our shared values, and the future that we're all working to build together. So I look forward to listening to the rest of the conversation. I want to thank again those that came and spoke from the community and Tiffany and the rest of the conversation that you all will have as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I'm wondering if you can note any points of the discussion among the Housing Commission that the council might find interesting?
Sorry, I lost my unmute button. The main thing that I'd say is a, a lot of what Tyler noted tonight was reflective of the conversation that the Housing Commission had in his capacity as a commissioner on that, on the Housing Commission. But i- in general, it's a lot of the focus is on ensuring that we are expansively adopting and adapting our codes and building standards to enable the development of more housing within the community while also maintaining some of those characteristics that are very important throughout the community. And a lot of focus was on that conversation that, that I think will always be central to this is the conversation of what constitutes affordability and how do we ensure that the more of this type of housing that we can develop, the more that we're able to ensure that that is housing supply that's made available to people that are living within the community who have been in desperate need of this housing and not becoming just second homes or even third homes and vacation rentals. I was very appreciative of what Tiffany raised just a bit ago on some of the legal implications of, of these sorts of developments, considering them more multifamily and that perhaps contributing in some part to the ability to not regulate, but at least limit the, the impact that this has on the number of, I just completely blinked on the term, excuse me, vacation rentals and things like that. But I, I think overall from the Housing Commission, my sense is that there's a lot of support for this as long as we are really considering those implications to the neighborhoods where this type of housing would be developed and expanding our definition of what types of housing this could include to include things like those three, four, and five plexes and the cottage court model.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a couple of questions that came to mind. A lot of my comments were pertaining to everything that Councilmember House spoke of, and she spoke way more eloquently than I could ever, so I'm not going to belabor those thoughts. I also had a couple of, or the things that the public participant Tyler mentioned as well were inside of my comments. And then the, the email from Michelle James that I read here from, to council had a lot of my comments infused in it as well. And is staff able to get, have access to those emails or, or, yeah, okay. So, so I'm hoping that you're looking at all that stuff. Now, the question I had was, is smaller lot size considered in the House bill?
So, no. Smaller lot sizes are not considered in the House bill. We do already have ways in our zoning code to change our lot sizes. It's not a perfect process, but I expect that that calibration of lot sizes, density, that's what's really coming out of that code analysis process. So that's what we're really looking at is how do we want to move forward with updating those parameters of our code, density, and then lot size and setbacks, lot coverage? How do we work at recalibrating those and for what purpose? Do we want to really go heavy on the incentives for affordable housing, or do we want to go heavy on market rate production? And we're still finessing and working that out. So because of the timeframe that we have to get this part, that's why we're jumping ahead of the code analysis process for this amendment is because this has a due date. And I get nervous about due dates. So that's the only reason we're trying, we're eating the elephant one bite at a time on this, but all, I can guarantee you that all of those elements are being reconciled. If it also helps, when I pulled up this example and I explained about housing types, because I also hear a lot about cottage courts. So remember the conversation about housing type and land use? Housing type, when the cottage court is four to six single-family detached units, so single-family homes on the same parcel of land. So that's this example, right? So that's already allowed in our code. What I would tell you is that both of these developments are in the exact same zoning district. They're both in the R1 zone, which is one of our more low-density zones. We already allow multifamily development. It just doesn't come in the form of a triplex or a fourplex currently. So you basically cannot build a building that big. But if you look at this multifamily development, it consists of single-family homes and duplexes. So that's about 20 units. If you converted that all to fourplexes, that would be five fourplex buildings on the lot. These things are already happening in our community, and people don't actually really even notice it. This is right next door to a single-family. I mean, and when I say right next door, these are right across the street from one another, this, these two pictures.
And I had another question. So I heard mention of rural residential. Could this apply to that zoning as well?
Yes, it would apply to that zoning as well. I will tell you that the bill does give us some limitation, so we would want to focus those middle housing types where we do have water and sewer available. So that likely the code that's going to come forward is lots that do have water and sewer at a minimum.
All right. And then I have two more quick questions. And so let me think here, where are we at? Dang, I just lost the one I had in my mind. What's the, okay, yeah, that's what it was. So are we, so we've also seen through the emails and stuff that there, the community is asking, can we make our own code within the, the parameters of this that is more specific to Flagstaff? And we also heard that from Councilmember House. Is that a possibility? And then one last question after that.
Sure. So we do have to be careful when we craft our own code because this statute is very clear that we can't, we can't tinker with the code to make it harder to do middle housing. But can we set parameters? And the parameter specifically identified in this particular statute is floor area ratio. And yes, we can set different floor area ratios for different properties. Let me give you an example of what that does. I have a 9,000-square-foot lot. Say my density allows me to put a fourplex on that 9,000-square-foot lot. If I have a floor area ratio of .5, it would allow me to build a 4,500-foot structure. Now, 4,500 square feet sounds pretty large, but you would be surprised at how large some single-family homes are. 4,500 square feet through four units, you can see that, you know, maybe one of those units is 1,500 square feet and the other three are 1,000 square feet. That, those start to limit what the size of those units and the maximum capacity, right? So it starts getting into that intensity. Because you, if we built a fourplex that was all five-bedroom units versus a fourplex that was mixed one and two and three-bedroom units, which are more, is more compatible and more consistent with the intensity of the surrounding development, that'll work much better. So we definitely have some of those tools that we can work with, and we have existing standards that still will remain in place like building height and setbacks and lot coverage and open space requirements and all of the things that we already require for development.
And we heard some great comments from the community. One, one commenter, Ms. Christian, or Ms. Christie, I'm sorry, mentioned a, a ton of things that, that also weigh heavily on my mind as well. And, and I also know that there are rules that prohibit a few of the, the solutions to those causes. So one of them that I'm concerned about is, is there a way for us to craft like an owner-occupied standard? And then last question is just, is there a community process from here, and what does that look like?
Sure. So the actual, the bill is specific that we cannot craft an owner-occupied, and I'm not even sure how we would honestly manage it if I was being truthful there. So there is that difficulty, and the bill is very specific that it won't allow us to do it. The public process from here, well, from here, we get to start drafting this text amendment. The, the initial tax, text amendment is going to stay as close to the statute outside of the fact that we're going to apply it citywide. We're going to stay as close to the statute right now as possible. The, and from there, we will heavily engage on, and through that code analysis project, on how we true up the lot sizes, how we adjust densities in this zone, which will be the next real big push to making middle housing even a bigger opportunity in Flagstaff.
Thank you so much for your entire presentation, Tiffany. You did such a wonderful job in answering all my questions. And I'm really excited about this project and that middle, missing middle piece. I'm mostly excited to see if in reality it does lower prices of things in the neighborhood, and at what point do we start seeing that happen as opposed to the opposite, which I'm living through right now. And, and lastly, I would like to, to see it be community-wide as much as possible, just to limit restrictions and to make it easier on this to flow. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Aslan.
Hi, Tiffany. You got me wondering what elephant tastes like. A couple of questions for you, and again, I apologize if you already addressed this when I was absent from the room for a moment, but might be worth just putting an extra beat on anyway. Three questions for you. The, the first is in terms of the commercial business zoning. Wondering if you can rifle off some unintended consequences if we were to go that route? And in my mind, I'm thinking about recent conversations we've had around quiet zones and noise ordinances. What's inherent in a central business zone that could, that, that could taint or affect other, other things we, other footprints that we have going on? It's kind of an open-ended question, and maybe you can't come up with a long list right here at the dais. If you can't, maybe you could provide some further thoughts on that down the road. My other question is, I, I didn't catch this. What is, what is the effect of all of this on HOAs? And then thirdly, Councilmember Garcia touched upon this, but I, I kind of wanted to do a little bit of a deeper dive with you. F Cube did send out an email. They had seven recommendations. Even if you don't want to formulate opinions about each of those recommendations, maybe you have some specific thoughts or can, can elucidate a couple, you know, just, just help us work through why some of those might be a good idea, why some of them might not work.
Okay. Let's start with the CB zone. So you mean in terms of the CB zone in terms of defining a central business district? You know, I just grabbed the easiest thing that I could, so the easiest thing I could, could ask GIS to do was to grab a zoning category that had central business, like sort of overlapped our downtown. I think it would be a very active conversation with lots of groups. I mean, the reason that I reached out to Economic Vitality is because there is that GIPLIT statute as well. That's, don't ask me to explain it, because I wouldn't be very good at it, but it's the only other statute that I know that also relies on a central business district. And so we would want to be really careful that, and what I've noticed in working with other communities, especially, especially in terms of this bill, is they were sort of a little disappointed because they already had designated central business districts, and if they were designating a central business district for this purpose, they would look at it differently. And so, one, we would just want to make sure that, you know, we look at all possible ramifications for how we define a central business district. I, I couldn't even possibly on my own think of what all those parameters would be. It would, it would take a little bit, for sure. In terms of HOAs, no. Zoning does not overrule HOAs or their CCNRs. So if their CCNRs prohibit ADUs, which happens a lot, or it prohibits these middle housing types, then there's nothing we can do on that end. And lastly, in terms of F Cube's comments, I am greatly appreciative of them taking the time and going through and looking at all of these, this amendment and looking at, at going citywide. You know, I think the biggest issue at this point is just that the fine-tuning of density and lot sizes is something we're really trying to do through the code analysis process and not necessarily with this amendment right now. But I, I know how eager folks are, and I'm so glad because it's coming. And I, when I say that, I, when I say it's coming, I always come back with it, it, it shows up. I promise that it'll be there. But we're, but that's, I think that would be the only clarification I would have on their comments to date. And our goal is to try to be as accommodating as we can to achieve the development that we know our community is looking for. We want to be thoughtful on the process. Nobody, you know, Nobody, you know, unfortunately, some, as time has gone on, bigger always seems better. And I think we need to get back to convincing people that smaller is okay. And we're going to do everything that we can to try to convince people that we need to work within the parameters of our existing neighborhoods. And when you see communities that have been wholly built on the middle housing types, I think of Milwaukee, Wisconsin for some reason. And I visit family and every house is a duplex or a triplex, but they all look the same. And they all look like single-family homes and they're all built in the same context. And so those are the kinds of things that we're talking about trying to get into is, is like, it's not really clear and abundant that right there is a whole new apartment complex. It's, it's about, and, and the other thing is, is when we add in that mix of diversity and housing types, we give greater opportunity for all different kinds of people to join in in the same neighborhood.
Thank you. So just to generally wrap up my philosophies here, I'm, I'm excited about this too. I, I, I'm leaning towards it being citywide. Seems like that's what the direction of council is going to be. I do want to be careful about, you know, historic overlays. We need to figure that out. I'm also very concerned about open space. We, we need to prioritize making sure there's plenty of open space for all these inhabitants to enjoy. And, and also, you know, I, I just remain concerned about our upcoming code amendment conversation. I think those should be, remain as strong as possible. And this is just one other thing that's going on that makes me think about how important it is that we, we get that passed. I think that generally sums it up for you. I, I hope that provides you with my general sense of things. Thanks.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you Tiffany for the presentation and all the information. I too am interested in moving this to citywide. And, you know, I just, I love the historic nature of, of several of our neighborhoods. And I would like to, and I know you, you can, if anyone can do it, it's you, but to work on preserving that historic character while we go through this process. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. So parking is being addressed in the code analysis project. So, and I know that we're grappling with on-street parking, off-street parking, snow removal and all of that. So that is being addressed. We don't have to worry about that right now.
We do. The, the state statute states that we can't require more than one parking space per unit.
Okay, but...
But the, but the bigger parking issue, yes. There's an overwhelming, larger parking issue that's being addressed as part of the code analysis process. But you are going to see a slight parking change with this amendment.
Okay. But that, there's nothing we can do about that. That's outside of our, okay. And... So central business district, this goes up to Coconino Estates. If we were to do this citywide, where would you, where would be a central business district for, say, the Cheshire area?
So no, we wouldn't define no central business districts.
Okay, okay. That makes sense. Thank you. And then just to, to answer a previous question that was asked, in Arizona, we are not allowed to enact rent control. So it's brought up a lot and we are unable to. All right. Are there any additional questions or comments? I am in supportive at citywide. Councilmember Matthews indicated that she was as well, and I didn't hear. Yeah, looks like we're all there.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Open call to the public, and I don't have any cards here. And informational items too from Mayor, Council and City Manager and future agenda item requests. Let's start with Councilmember Spence.
As I am the liaison to the Open Space Commission, I can report that they're bringing forth some very useful improvements at Picture Canyon Preserve. And they'll be coming to the council with a recommendation for a Jack Welsh Memorial Bridge designation across Rio de Flag. And they're working on other trails in, in the Picture Canyon area. So that is a hopeful development. I'm also on the Transportation Commission where the main work is done by the Committee on Biking and the Committee on Pedestrian Activities. And those, those committees reporting to the Transportation Commission are really a vital part of our city ongoing improvement. So I'm pleased to be the council liaison to those.
Councilmember House.
Nothing tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I do have a couple of things. I was able to attend the fire truck push-in and it was a wonderful event. I did not know the history of all of this. And it was really cool to check it out. We do have a new fire truck engine number four. And many fire departments hold a push-in ceremony when taking delivery of a new apparatus, often inviting the community members to celebrate. And there were a lot of us out there yesterday. And we also did the wet-down ceremony, which is a tradition in the fire service that is typically held after a new fire truck or fire station has been put into service. And we had the fire bucket and we, full of water, and we transferred it one by one and then hosed down the fire truck. It was really cool. I didn't realize how much I was going to enjoy that, so. Then last night, I did the Congress to Campus out at NAU. And this was great. We had two past congressmen there talking about having healthy conversations and how to talk across the aisle. That was really cool. And I want to do a shout-out to Chief Conley, and I gave council one. They did a resource guide. I've requested this, being a downtown business owner. We have a lot of emergencies or people we want to help and not sure how to do it. So he created this and handed it out to all the business owners, and I am just so thankful. Thank you. And my last but not least, I did do a ribbon cutting today with the mayor. I'm going to let her expand on it, but it was great. It's honoring the ribbon or the wraps on our cabinets. And we have a new partner with APS. They are letting us do that on some of theirs. And that was a great, great time today. Thank you.
Councilmember Aslan.
Just real briefly, I don't, I don't know that this needs to raise to the level of a fair city manager, but I've been listening with great interest over the course of well over a year now as these roller derby athletes come into council to make their plea that we, we do something more for them. I would agree that, oh, maybe, maybe we should do something more for them. I think there should be some sort of discussion around that. Maybe it's wrapped into some other things that Parks and Rec is doing and other facility conversations that are already happening. So it doesn't need to be, you know, plucked out and shine a light on it just by itself. But I, I would like to see some movement on that conversation and, and see what we can do for these girls. I have absolutely no doubt that, that sport can be life-changing for a lot of women. And, you know, we, we try to accommodate other athletes and, you know, pickleball comes to mind. We know how enthusiastic that community is about their sport. I think we should give the same amount of attention to our women who do roller derby. Thanks.
Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I don't think that this rises to the, to the merit of a fair item as well, but I had a couple of things to report from the community and concerns of a couple of areas. So Fourth Street runs up and down like this, and then we have Fourth, Fourth Avenue that comes across it. I'm assuming, which you should never do as a councilperson, but I'm just assuming that we might not, the city might not have jurisdiction over the, what looks like private property land that it kind of goes through or that shopping center before it hits the, the trailer park in the back. I have no idea how the city, if they have any input on this part whatsoever. But there's a, like a, almost an 18-inch crater in the middle of that road that maybe it's not our responsibility to fix. But if it is, we should definitely be looking at that, just at least for nothing else, for the, the residents of that trailer park that is behind that Green Law Shopping Center. Also, Empire Road, this comes from the campaign trail and I got reminded of it this last week when I was campaigning in the Joe Don area and the Smoke Rise area. The community members are really concerned that on Empire, that there's no place for, like there's no crosswalk or anything for the kids to cross. And their concerns were that the, the, the heavy traffic in there, like the heavy hall traffic that's in there. They, they, they may, they're, they're just worried that their kids aren't going to be able to cross the street safely. And I don't know if there's a traffic study that can be done, if that's a point of interest for the city. But it's something that I would like to, to see the city look at. It was a whole community, like as many members of that community were like, yes, the, the trap, the, the big trucks that go up and down this road go awfully fast and we're really concerned. So beyond that, I will go to my affairs for the week. And I wanted to mention that this Thursday, we're having a library commission meeting. I probably will not be able to attend, but I will watch it on the replay. So that way I can report to council, but it'll be at 1:00. The Market of Dreams has an event with sustainability at 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. And I think that's an excellent opportunity for anybody in the community to get out and start networking. Of course, I have, I'm double-booked at the time, so I will make it to the end of that, but it won't be for the whole thing. On Saturday at the Flagstaff Mall, it looks like we have a first responders chess challenge. I don't know all the details about it, but if anybody's into chess, I would highly recommend to go to the mall around 10, 10:00 AM and maybe look for this thing. And I'm definitely going to be there looking for it as well. And this, earlier today, I spoke in front of a class of NAU students and they got to know me pretty well and told my story. And also, we discussed leadership, the current climate in our federal government and also open-mindedness when it comes to discourse in public meetings. And that was a fun opportunity. And I also briefly hung out with Vice Mayor at the fire truck, the welcoming of the new fire truck and the dismissal of the old fire truck. And it was a, a, kind of a beautiful and sentimental process. And it was, it was, it was kind of bigger emotion than I thought I was going to receive watching a fire truck get put, you know, get, get put out to pasture. That's it, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Matthews has dropped off the meeting. So I would like to share that on last Friday morning, Councilmember Spence and Councilmember Garcia and I were at the Cesar Chavez Community Breakfast, which was wonderful with some great speakers. And Jo Rohrbacher is the artist who had her work wrapped today on the APS utility box. And it's right outside of Sonawa Middle School on Butler. And just what a great opportunity to have your art shared in such a public way. And there's, the open call to the artists is still going on, right, until April something? So if you are an artist and are interested in doing a project like that, grant applications are available on our website under beautification. And tomorrow is a Commission on Inclusion and Adaptive Living as well as an Econa Board Meeting. And that's all I have. City Manager?
Nothing for me. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. So we're adjourned.